Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Abby.
I'm Sasha.
And my name is Grace. And we're members of Project Earth, the Edina High School Environmental Club. We are here to thank you for applying for the grant to obtain electric school buses for the district. This is a step in promoting a healthier community and works hand-in-hand with the Edina Climate Action Plan. Many of us rode in school buses in elementary school, and kids of all ages ride the buses every day, as they are vital for transportation to and from school. But riding diesel buses can particularly particularly cause health detriments for children at elementary school age while they are growing.
One out of 20 kids have asthma, which is regularly triggered by the toxic fumes generated by diesel school buses. According to the National Health Institute of Health, a kid riding a school bus may be exposed to up to four times the level of diesel exhaust as someone in a car ahead of it. And it is even worse in the back of the bus during the winter where the windows are closed. Additionally, the level of school bus exhausts is up to four times as much as cars. Bus drivers who have to drive to school the school buses every day are specifically affected by the fumes which can have damaging effects. Instead, using our two new electric school buses will significantly benefit the health of both students and bus drivers, as well as the environment. Minnesota needs to have electric buses because of the harsh impacts in the wintertime.
When there are so many buses and when transportation routes go all across the city, it makes me feel guilty that not just me and my classmates, but my family members, my neighbors, and my community are all affected by the exhaust and pollution from the stops and starts that these dozens of buses make multiple times a day throughout our city. It feels very counterproductive to have this means of transportation that can take so many people at once and can be so useful in bringing energy back to the grid and has so much potential to be sustainable, not live up to its potential. Edina is defined by excellence, and this is yet another step that we are thrilled the city is taking to guarantee a better future for the children. This opportunity is making us yet again a model city, one that challenges citizens both in and outside of it to be environmentally conscious. Thank you. We will now be handing it off to Kathy Iverson and Mike Menzel.
Hello, I'm Mike Menzel. I'm a retired physician and been a resident of Edina for for the past 40 years.
And my name is Kathy Iverson. I've been a resident of Edina for 40 years as well, and I am a retired public health consultant.
So I'm a founding member of the Health Professionals for a Healthy Climate, and this organization works with the public to educate the public about the impacts of climate change on health. Among our many efforts that we focused on has been improving the health of school kids by advocating for schools and bus companies to adopt electric school buses.
We are so proud that Edina Public Schools are setting an example and leading the way with a sustainable and renewable energy initiative like electric school buses.
So as a student said, the electric school buses are important for protecting the health of the schoolchildren and the bus drivers. The benefits to them and our community include no harmful diesel exhaust. And studies have shown that there's better student performance and less absenteeism for kids that are riding electric school buses. And also, as I mentioned, a reduction in respiratory diseases like asthma.
Next slide. So we were made aware of the club at Edina High School called Project Earth with high school advisor Eric Burfind and community members Paul Thompson and Mindy Aller. We contacted Paul and Mindy about the possibility of meeting with the students to share information about electric school buses and how they could present that information to the Edina School Board. The students were extremely interested to learn about why electric school buses improve student health and how these buses can help address climate change. The students created a presentation that was given to the Edina School Board on November 13th, 2023. It was an inspiring and passionate presentation.
So we share our students' appreciation for the decision by the school board to apply for the EPA School Bus Grant Program and receive the award for two electric school buses for the district. And so this was made possible through the EPA Clean School Bus Program, which is providing $5 billion over, well, through 2026 to replace existing school buses with zero or low emission vehicles.
How can we achieve even more benefits? Well, the latest EPA Electric School Bus Grant has just come out for 2024, so we encourage Edina Public Schools to consider applying for the next round of funding as well. And additionally, the Minnesota Department of Commerce will be releasing their funding soon. So school districts are allowed to stack those grants, essentially for a free bus. It is a strategic way to improve our school bus fleet with significant funding support. And let us know how we can help you. Your transition to cleaning electric school buses, as Abby said, provides hope for our schoolchildren today and for the schoolchildren tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for everyone that came tonight, and thank you so much for the Health Professionals for a Healthy Climate, for bringing all of this information forward, and for Project Earth for coming and speaking to us last year about this. And then I really want to give a thanks to Anne Marie Leland and Mert and Dr. Stanley for applying for the grant and moving forward with that. You guys thanked the board, but the hard work is really our administration that applied for the grants, so we can't take credit for it. So thank you very much, and thank you to you guys as well. Okay, we are going to move on. Tonight, we have a special report and presentation from Kathy Rendelman, who's Executive Director of the Edina Education Fund. And she was invited here to give information to the community and the school district and all of our stakeholders about the impact the Edina Education Fund has on us. So I'd like to welcome Executive Director Kathy Rendelman.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, Board of Directors, Cabinet, and community members for having me this evening. I am excited to be here, as the Ed Fund has just finished off our 29th year in service to the Edina Public Schools, and we are proud to be entering our 30th year of service. So pretty exciting. Jump right into our presentation tonight. We'll start out with our vision and how we are here to service our school district. Our vision as the Edina Education Fund is to ensure educational excellence in Edina Public Schools for all of our students and staff. One of the ways we do this, the picture that you're looking at, is actually our student leaders of our mental health group. It's called our lead team. It's the leaders evolving and developing. Last year, they created a Mental Health Week over at Southview and at Valleyview, and you're looking at one of the flex session breakouts they did that was hula dancing. I believe that's over at Valleyview, so super fun time. Our mission as an independent, mission-aligned partner of the Edina Public Schools, the Edina Education Fund secures incremental funding for district-wide programs and services that strengthen academic learning and support the whole person on their educational journey. We are proud to do this. Like I said, we are entering our 30th year. And the picture you see is also from our Mental Health Week. I believe that was actually at Southview, and they are making slime. And who we serve, all Edina Public Schools students and staff, whether we're doing that through professional development in one of our key areas of literacy, mental health, or STEAM, or whether we are doing that through mental health services or any of the other opportunities that we give our students or our staff. So why is it that the Ed Fund exists? I get this question all the time. Being a public school, you would think that we have all the money in the world. You, of course, as our board, or perhaps as a cabinet member or people that might be listening in regularly to board meetings would know that there is definitely a deficit when it comes to public education. We try as much as we can to work with the revenue that the state gives us, but as we all know, usually those expenses outweigh the revenue that we have coming in, and it leaves us with a gap. We take our state funding, which usually covers about 60% of what we need to run our schools. Then we cover our local property taxes and other monies that we get from local areas. That covers approximately 36%. We get a little bit from the federal government, and we always seem to have a gap. What do we do with that gap? In the 23-24 school year, it ended up being about $4 million. Were there some certain ways that we approach that? First thing we do is we always try to go to the state or the federal government, and we tell them that they need to fix it. That's our Legislation Action Committee. That's the way that we can talk to our congresspeople and tell them that they need to be funding public education, since it is public education. We always tell our community members that that is the best way to get something done. Write to your congresspeople and tell them that you want public education to be fully funded across the United States. The next thing you do is your job is to create a balanced budget. That's something that we're very proud of at Edina, that we always do that. We do have a AAA bond rating here. We make sure that we work under a balanced budget every year. Sometimes it's painful to do so. Going through a Berg process last year was not easy, and we commend you for doing that. But that is something that has to be done. As the Edina Education Fund, we are constantly asked, why doesn't the Ed Fund step in and save the day? For a very good reason, we're not part of that process. The Ed Fund is someone that can step in afterwards. Step three on the slide. As a fundraising effort, maybe if there's something that we can implement early, something we can add to, something that we can bring back that might have been cut later on, but never as part of the budgeting process, because it's not sustainable. And it's always important that we have a budget that is sustainable and dependable, and not that relies on somebody giving. We've been around since 1995, and in that time period, we've given well over $8.5 million, but that's the amount that our database concurrently tracks, so that's the amount that you see here today. Pretty proud of that number. This year is part of your consent agenda you're going to be receiving tonight. We have donated in last year's actually 23-24 school year, $439,041. Pretty proud of that number. You'll see a lot of money went to literacy. We've been working really hard on the science of reading for the last. This will be our third year that's putting quite a bit of money into the science of reading. As you're going to see later, actually, and I think it's my next slide, we are finishing off a huge fundraising effort to get that professional development for our teachers. Putting in also quite a bit of money at other places in the district. As you can see, we've got obviously quite a bit of work in the Rotary Global Scholars area, and then spread out across pretty much everything else. We have always done quite a bit with our senior scholarship program, various fiscal sponsorships and other programs throughout the district. We're dabbing into the Edina Alumni Association, which came out of our last Edina Public School Strategic Plan. The Ed Fund started up that Edina Alumni Association, and we're growing that, trying to make sure that we have something that we can capitalize our alumni and bring them back into our schools, that we can utilize them for speakers, that they feel comfortable in our community and are brought in and kept as part of our community going forward. So what is it that we do? Well, the Ed Fund has three main programs: literacy, STEAM, which is STEM plus the arts, and mental health and wellness. Our 24-25 goal for literacy is high, it's $350,000, to finish off the science of reading. That's incredibly high when you consider for the last two years, that has been pretty close to what those two years of goal number have been. But those two years included a federal grant to cover a portion of that money. This year, that federal grant has been depleted, and this entire amount of money will be coming from the community's support to make that number happen. We are looking for a Edina community to step forward and help us make that $350,000 number. That is not going to come easy. So you will see a large campaign this year asking every family who can give to give at their level that they are comfortable with. This year alone, since July 1st, we have already released $44,000 to the district for the science of reading. In the STEAM area, we are looking to raise $81,000, which includes approximately $30,000 for the arts. The Ed Fund has not targeted the arts for the last few years, and it's something important to our board that we are able to put aside some money this year and raise money specifically for the arts. We've actually set a goal for each of our buildings. So we're looking to raise $500 for the Early Learning Center, $2,500 for each of our elementary schools, $3,500 for our middle school, and $7,500 for our high school to improve the arts. Each of our principals have already been made aware of this goal and are looking for ways that they can utilize these funds in their buildings to improve their arts. And then our goal for $120,000 for mental health and wellness. The vast majority of these funds go to cover our students that are underinsured or uninsured to make sure that they can access the mental health therapy that we have available in our buildings with our Fraser therapists. It costs the Ed Fund $1,848 to get our students access to a full-round of mental health therapy. That includes 12 sessions, which is approximately three months of mental health coverage. During that time, our social workers in our building work with the family to see if they can get them coverage after that time periods to ensure continuity of care and to make sure that that family is taken care of when those three months are up. We also have some money set inside there for a discretionary fund. We also have some staff mental health support in there, about $30,000, as up to $120,000 this year. Of that 120, we are carrying just under $40,000 over the fiscal year end from last year. So this year's number, we are only looking to raise around $80,000, if that makes sense. In addition to our programs, we also offer a large number of services within our organization under the umbrella of fiscal sponsorships, and PTO partnerships is one of the areas. We recently just signed for all of our student-led clubs and activities at Edina High School to be covered under the Ed Fund. This year, there are 29 student activities at Edina High School, and I believe it's 58 student-led clubs. Those contracts were signed today by Troy Stein and myself, and those student groups will be meeting with me at the end of October to get directions on how they can fundraise under the Ed Fund umbrella for the good of their club or activity. We also have numerous other fiscal sponsorships, of which one is Edina Unified. That's one of our larger agreements where people can donate to Edina Unified, and we offer grants for that organization under our umbrella. And this year alone, we've offered $5,500 in grants under Edina Unified. And as I said before, we have the senior scholarships that we offer through our group and also the Edina Alumni Association. Coming this spring, we anticipate another 58 senior scholarships through the Edina Education Fund. And also, we'll work with any Alumni Association groups that come our way that decide that they want to have a reunion this summer. Usually, what we end up doing for them is we will host them on our website for any booking or any groups that they need to do, whether it be for their actual event or if they want to have a tour of Edina High School at some point this summer or this fall or next fall, for their group to come through the high school and actually visit their alma mater. And we'll take care of that for them. This past summer, we had the groups of 1974 and 1984 come through, and the 1974 group actually set up what they called the Edina Excellence Fund and raised $16,000 that was restricted to Edina High School for them to spend this year. As your Edina Education Fund, we have set up this year, and one of our main goals is to increase our sustaining donor campaign. So we encourage all community members to not just donate to the Ed Fund, but to become a sustaining donor. That is something that means the world to us. Instead of making a $100 pledge to donate once a year, we would encourage people to donate $10 a month. That's something that we can bank on, that's something that we can plan for, and that's something that's very meaningful to us to be able to do. You can do that right online on our website, and it actually helps us budget for years to come. We always say that learning happens every day, and when donations happen to every day, it helps us fund that. I would like to say too, and you'll see more information coming out about this in the next couple months, especially when we get to give to the Max Day, that the vast majority of our current sustaining donors are actually EPS staff members, which is pretty interesting. And that's all I have for you. Thank you for having me here tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Board members, any questions?
Thank you so much for your continued dedication to to Edina Public Schools. If someone wanted to donate their time to help the fundraising efforts, could they do so? How would they do that?
Absolutely. So we're always looking for more people to help out with any of our activities, to help out with our student board, help out with events, Walk in the Parade, which just happened, so you luckily get out of that one. But any number of things that we have going on, they can reach out to me. My information is on our website, or just contact any of our board members that are listed on our website as well. We'd be happy to get you involved. Great question. Thanks, Cheryl.
So thank you very much for being here. So in your report, you indicated that it was $439,041 for last year. And you kind of indicated what your goals were for this year. What was the increase that you're looking to increase for '24-25?
Yeah, so '24-25, our grant-out process for our programs, do quick math in my head, it was $350 for literacy, $81 for STEAM, and $120 for mental health. So add that up.
So call it 600, sounds about right? So that would probably be at least a good 20-something percent increase from where you were before. And you made a wonderful comment that I wanted to echo, that when the community was dealing with the Berg process and thinking that how are we going to, we were trying to save an additional $800,000, $1 million, was what we were kind of coming up short, outside of the overall $4 million, that we're trying to find new revenue sources or new other ways we could deal with this situation. And I remember a lot of people did talk about the Ed Fund, and I was asked, well, how many people actually then donated to the Ed Fund during that entire process? And if I remember correctly, it wasn't a huge increase that we then saw. So I just really want to just reflect to the community, whoever's listening, that the Ed Fund does an absolutely critical job for our community and for our school district, for both our students and our staff. And for our community who says they're fully engaged in what we're doing in our community, this is one of the easiest ways for them to become a sustaining member, to be able to provide that type of resource to where we can continue to fill the gap, as you commented on, from that standpoint. So I hope that the presentation tonight, for people who are not paying attention normally, recognize that this is a critical element to our success in Edina, and I hope that the community will continue to find its way to increase its capacity to support the Ed Fund. If we're talking about a 20-plus increase from last year, that's about $150,000, $160,000 just to meet your goals. Every one of those goals matters.
Absolutely. So thank you for that. And those numbers that we're putting out there tonight are numbers that we've worked with teaching and learning in other groups on the cabinet to make sure that we can do for the district. Those are not lofty goals that the Ed Fund is putting out. Those are numbers that we're working together with to make sure that we can do, to make sure that all of this work can be done for our teachers and for our students.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for pointing that out, that you work directly with our administrators to find gaps in funding and where you can fill those gaps. So I appreciate you pointing that out. And I wanted to just thank you for your work and thank you for the donation that we're going to be approving in the consent agenda tonight. It's very impactful to our district, and I greatly appreciate it. And then I wanted to point out very quickly, there seems to be a formatting issue on our slide. And I want to make sure people can actually see the website if they're interested, and I believe it's www.edinaedfund.org.
Correct.
Okay, so I want to make sure that people are able to access the website if they're interested in donating or learning more about it. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to our consent agenda. And is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Now onto our discussion items, and we have quite a few discussion items tonight. Our first one is an Early Learning Center update. And we have Dr. Anne Marie Leland, Director of Community Education and Strategic Partnerships, Jody Remzing, Director of Student Support Services, and Kim Isley, Assistant Director of Early Learning.
Good evening, Chair. I just touched a switch. I don't know what I just did. Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stacy Stanley, and all of the directors of the Edina Public School Board and community members, our colleagues over there. Thank you, audience. We are here in an exciting presentation of the Early Learning Center. I can't tell you how excited I am. 2024-2025, Fostering Excellence in Early Learning. Jody and I have the pleasure tonight to showcase our new Early Learning Assistant Director, Kim Isley, and she is doing a fantastic job, starting out as of July 1st, in a position where we are now having one person oversee the entire Early Learning Center in an integrated and inclusive way to lead our students and families. So I just wanted to kick this off. And Kim, are you ready to go through the slides? Okay.
That was very nice. Thank you. All right, well, let's get started. I just want to thank you all for having me here today. It's been very exciting. I have enjoyed my first several months here at Edina. It's been definitely a career dream come true, so it's been very fun. So tonight, we're going to just talk a little bit, okay, a little bit about me, humbly about me being here, and then a little bit about our inclusive philosophy here at the Early Learning Center, and then our innovation and growth where we're going. Just a little bit about me professionally. I've worked in education for the last 27 years. All of those years have been in special education. I have been an ECSE teacher for 24 of those years, working both in the early intervention and the three-to-five classroom, which has been a joy. I have been a member of the DEC Board, which is the Division of Early Childhood for the state of Minnesota. And I've also been a trainer for Family Guided Routine-Based Intervention, which is a new initiative that the state of Minnesota took on about probably 15 years ago now, which is an innovative way to just help families in the home to help their children, which was a fun role for me to have too. I've been in leadership for over seven years as a district-wide leader, helping teams from really early childhood all the way up through age of 22 through transition. And for the past nine years, I've worked for the university, I always say this wrong, University of Minnesota State, Minnesota State University, Mankato. Sorry, every time I mess that up. For the last nine years, supervising student teachers in early childhood special education. And that's something I just really, really enjoy doing, so I just keep doing it, because it just helps me have a partnership with post-secondary partners, helps me stay current with what we're teaching and coaching our new graduates, and then it keeps me partnering with new graduates, because we're always looking for good teachers. So. All right, so. Yeah, I just, yeah. This just is, you know, this has our vision up here, and this just keeps us, has lots of great pictures of all of our students here at the Early Learning Center, and this is something that we're constantly talking to our staff about to keep in our forefront when we're teaching our young children. So this year, at Leadership Advanced, Dr. Stanley brought this to all of us leaders, and this was my first Leadership Advanced with the Edina Public Schools, and I was just so inspired by Dr. Stanley, because when I was thinking about how I was going to be bringing together staff from both the early childhood and the early child special education side, I was thinking about all the things that I was going to be saying to them when I was meeting them this fall. And I just really felt like this resonated with me in the belonging, the belonging of all the students that we're going to be serving within the Early Learning Center and all the staff coming together for the first time under one leader. And so this was just something that we talked about a lot during Workshop Week. This is something we're going to continue to talk about through the school year. It's just this sense of belonging, and so. It's just this sense of belonging, and so this is something we're just resonating through within our ELC. When I piggybacked off of the sense of belonging, these are things that I, these three principles here are things that I really brought to the team, thinking about coming under one leader and understanding what it means to be one team. Before me, there were two leaders that ran the ELC. And under no fault of their own, because there were two leaders leading the ELC, there was a little bit more of a silo effect, just because of the way that the structure was created at that time. And so when I came on board, I wanted to make sure that all the staff understood, and the families and the community that we are serving, started to understand that we're going to come together as one team. And so that was our first guiding principle that we talked about during Workshop Week, and something we continue to work on and that we're going to talk about through the school year. And then the second shared agreement that we came to during Workshop Week is that all decisions are going to be made from the lens that we're going to be doing what's best for kids and families who attend the Early Learning Center. And so that's something that we're going to have as a guiding principle of ours going forward. And the team of teachers workshop, we, in fact, when I rolled this out, several of them clapped. I mean, they were just so excited to see this because this is really, truly what our teachers value, and this is really exciting. So this is a shared agreement we all have. And then thirdly, I just wanted our teachers to remember and to keep this at the forefront, that we're going to do this through collaboration, communication, and coordination because we're just all coming together under one roof, one team. And as you go, as we go forward through the slides, you're going to see where we're going, and that these three principles are going to be key to where we're headed here at the ELC. So this is super exciting here this fall. We've had such magic in ECFE again, and our ECFE team is just so excited. We have some really fun classes. So first off, I want to just highlight that our ECFE numbers are trending up to pre-COVID numbers. So that's just a celebration that I wanted to highlight tonight. That's just so exciting. Secondly, we have lots of great STEAM classes being offered on Saturdays and weekday evenings. We have had to add a baby playtime class this fall due to high demand. So we have a baby playtime class that we have drop in on Tuesdays that is so full that we had a waiting list that we had to add a class for Wednesdays. So that's super exciting. All of our Tues classes are completely full with a waiting list. And then we also have a family literacy class that continues to grow. Currently, we have over 24 families enrolled. We're serving 41 individuals. And then with that, we serve the children then within a preschool setting and our SIB care setting. And this continues to grow every single week. We have over nine different languages that we're serving in that class, and we have to bring in, I think, four to five different interpreters. And every week, this class just keeps growing and growing. So there's just so many exciting things happening down in ECFE right now. So this is something that I really had a lot of interest in, and so I just was really interested in what we are doing in ECFE. When I came in, I was kind of taking a look at the class brochure, looking at our class offerings, and I started to talk to some of our ECFE teachers. And Libby Plowman has this really great wealth of knowledge of how to do a lot of research and development, and she stepped forward and was willing to partner with me in looking at what do our families want in ECFE. And so she and I are working together, along with the ECFE colleagues, on our research and development on looking at what we need in ECFE. So we are asking these three questions. Are what local successful ECFE programs are offering? What kind of programmings do our stakeholders want? And how are our peers engaging and reaching families? And we're doing this through a variety of methods. We're going to ask questions, surveys, interviews, focus groups, and then we're going to create these, Libby actually, is going to create findings through a presentation in a presentation, and she's going to present that to all of us here and her colleagues. And then we are going to use this for the next three years to generate what classes we're going to offer. We're super excited about this. Libby has great skills in this area, so some exciting stuff coming. Inclusivity will continue to be a core value at the ELC. I would just like to say, when I stepped into this role, I was very impressed by how our team at the ELC values every student. This is very apparent when I stepped into the ELC. So everything that we do going forward is just going to be something that we're going to continue to do to enhance the experience of inclusivity here at the ELC. So we continue to have that be a core value of ours. I would just like to highlight that 93% of our students currently right now with identified special needs are currently offered an inclusive preschool experience. Many of our students have or continue will have pyramid training, at least Tier One by the end of October, because we've had a lot of new hires this year. One thing that we instituted this week, we call it Teaming Thursdays. We have all of our teams meeting either with their age-level teams or and/or with each other to help enhance teaming with our special education and our general education teams. But we would like to go further with it, so we are going to keep expanding inclusivity. So where we're going is next year, we are going to be implementing, because we're starting to develop our catalog for next year. We've had several meetings already because we are going to be bringing that to print by November 7th. So we are going to bring co-taught classrooms to the ELC next year. We're going to start small, and what that means is we're going to have one general education and one special education in the classroom together for the entirety of the classroom. We're going to start maybe with maybe two classrooms in our half-day classrooms, and then we are going to start in our full-day classrooms as well because we feel that's important as well. We're going to increase the diversity of our class offerings. By that creative staffing in classrooms up there with that bullet point, that means that we're going to just figure out how we're going to do this for our all-day classes. And then we're building an MTSS system of support here at the ELC. And an MTSS system just means a multi-tiered system of supports to ensure that all of our kids are functioning within our pyramid model and making sure that we're implementing interventions before we get to a special education evaluation. Also new happenings this current year at the ELC is we had to add an all-day threes class because we said we had such a high demand. We had to add a half-day fours class because we had such a high demand. The half-day fours class is completely full. We have a new front office look, if you have not seen that yet. We moved some office spaces around in the back. I particularly wanted my office to move up to the front. I wanted to be the front office space near the front office so I could be in the know. We have a new family commons coming, furniture and design coming the end of October here. And we have busing for our scholarship kids. It's been really great. The Transportation Department has been amazing to work with. They've partnered with us. They were great with, Anne Marie and I had this last-minute idea in July, and they partnered with us, and they were successful. So it's been great. And then we have voluntary pre-K funding for the first time. And we just had a meeting with the state representative, and we're going to be able to keep it for years to come. And we have new teachers, lots of new teachers. We had a lot of hiring to do when I came on. That was the first thing I needed to do on July was hire, and so we did. And that's what we hired. So we have lots of great new teachers, and more have just recently been hired. So it's been exciting. And that's all we had. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. Board members, questions, comments? Director Gable.
Thank you and welcome, Kim, to Edina Public Schools. I'm sure that you have been told what a special place that is, and you shared that in your report. There are, I appreciate this report and how you're, kind of your vision, and you're three months in. So it'll be really exciting next year when we get this report to kind of, when we get to see some of the ideas you have come to fruition. When, you talked a little bit about your one-school vision, and I'll be really interested to see that because I think that follows through so well with our strategic plan that talks about inclusivity. And so it'll be really, it'll be interesting to see in a year kind of what some of the things that have come out of that kind of vision for that one-school. I noticed that our special ed numbers are up dramatically in our Early Learning Center. Jody, do you want to talk to that? Is there anything that we're kind of, that's not a bad thing, but it's just something that I observed that I thought, hmm, I wonder what the reasoning is behind that?
Yeah, so one of the things, the Minnesota Department of Education, when they hold meetings and they're talking about our early childhood numbers statewide, they keep saying this is the most ever. And our numbers really started going up during COVID, and so there was a lot of things that we were wondering what's going on. Maybe our students not leaving, you know, the home as much, or masks impacting their development, all of these different things. And so we really have never been able to find out why our numbers are increasing in early childhood, but we know that they are taking place throughout the state and that numbers are just very high everywhere. So there's just, there's a lot of students, which is good. We're finding them for Childfind, but these numbers have not started to go down post-pandemic.
Okay, okay, great. And I think, you know, as we, as we think about, you know, early identification is obviously really important. And as we can support you in servicing those students, you know, that's, that's, I think, where we sometimes get to come in. So let them know what you need. I had, I think that was, oh, I think, you know, next year, when we see you again, seeing maybe some trend data over like how, because one of the things we've talked about at the board level is increasing resident enrollment, but also just kind of rebounding from COVID with some of those numbers. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how do those numbers, what are the specific numbers that we're seeing? And I know, yeah, so that would be for next year. So, thank you.
Director Burman.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. My one question, when I see the report, and I think about where trends have gone, and we're seeing increases and so on and so forth, what is our capacity to serve? We have the same challenge when it comes to Kids Club. We have the same challenge when it comes to some of the other community education elements. I would think ELC is no different than that. Are you able to speak at all, or at least prepare us for this next year as to, as you work through this problem, or it's opportunity and a problem, I think, capacity? Could you speak a little bit to that by any chance?
Yeah, so when I came on board this year, we were, as far as rooms, like physical space, if I needed one more room, it was going to be the staff lounge. So physical space-wise, we're about at capacity. You know, part of that comes in play with, you know, we have extended learning, which we call our childcare. So we take two rooms for that. If we needed a third room, that's where I was going to have to go to the staff lounge. We were going to have to lose our staff lounge for the childcare portion of it. And then we added some classes that you saw. We added a fours morning, and then we added an all-day threes this year. So we do have six all-day classes. So when you think about capacity that way, that this is what I think the community wants. They're looking for all-day classes. They're looking for the extended learning, which is our childcare, because they need a place, I think they're looking for high-quality preschool for their child, and then maybe some extended, like some childcare around that because they want a place for their child to be all day. So I think the all-day classes are important, but they take a classroom for an all-day versus like maybe you don't, those are 20 kids versus like our half-day classes, you can serve 20 in the morning and 20 in the afternoon. So if you think of capacity that way, we could serve more kids if you had half-day classes than a full-day class. But I think the community's saying the all-day is what they're looking for too in terms of what they need for their kids. So it's a balancing.
Thank you. And then the second question, and not necessarily meant for you, but when we've talked about our demographics and the actual forecasting out of what demographics of how many children are actually going to be available to come to school. That's not an upward trend. That's actually going to be a downward trend over some period of time. Edina itself is not necessarily experiencing that, but as our overall population demographics look, we've seen through Hazel's study and through other demographic studies that there's some horizon that says we're not necessarily going to keep going up. We're going to start to level, if not start to go down. So when I talk about capacity, it's also, how do we strategically decide what are we able to serve our community, to what level, and so on and so forth? Even if there's still more demand that exceeds that, this is our kind of upper bound that we have to where we can then maintain so that we're not making a big investment in something for the future to where then we might struggle with how are we going to fulfill it? So when I'm just saying capacity, I mean it on both ends of that spectrum. Thank you.
I had two questions, and welcome to Edina.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. They're both around the same topic, which is gathering data from stakeholders, and I appreciated that your slide in here about gathering information about what our families want from ECFE offerings. I was wondering if, when you're doing that study, are you going to be able to access individuals that are not currently participating? Okay.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that question. We're, we have three subsets that we're looking at right now in terms of our current enrolled families. Our families that aren't enrolled, but could be enrolled, and then a group of families outside of that. So we're trying to cast a wide net in that third bucket, and we're still working through, are we going to be using Thought Exchange as a platform? Are we going to be using certain other methods? Qualitative and quantitative methodology to gather this information? So we're still in process, but we're close to fine-tuning that, and we are working with Daphne Edwards as well on making sure we're doing this correctly and we're reaching the audiences that are appropriate. So thank you for that.
Okay, that was going to be my next question, was how does this tie in with the marketing efforts and Daphne's efforts around understanding how and who and why people are interested or not interested in our programming? So I'm glad to hear that you're doing that, which parlay's into my third-ish question. Second question was, is this all surrounding ECFE, or is it also surrounding preschool care? Because I noticed in our data metrics plan that there's a, I don't know if it's trend data, but there's a pretty large difference in resident enrollment and non-resident enrollment for that program specifically. And we know how important it is to capture our residents when they're young.
Yes, yes.
So I just wanted to see if you guys are going to be surveying around that topic as well, or if that's more in Daphne's court? So I wanted to check on that piece.
We are continuing to work side-by-side with Daphne on every step of the way, but are starting with the ECFE piece first. And for that demographic in terms of, I know what you're talking about in terms of the data metrics piece. And overall, we really trend as the 422 students, and again, this year, we're about that in terms of the entire EC, or ELC complement in terms of students. So it's 80% overall, about 79%. But for our EC, for our pre-K programs, especially our four-year-olds, we have a mechanism through the legislature called Pathway One Funding. And Pathway One is a scholarship for families that they get from a vendor, Families First, out of Rochester, that contracts with the Department of Education to get this funding, and then families actually get to choose where they go. So we may get families from out of district, right, our non-resident enrollment, but they come to us and we have to, we have to serve them. So that, that might be part of that makeup of 70%, yeah.
Which I have no, I, that's great, and I'm glad we're a choice for individuals. It says a lot about the quality of our care. I just also want to make sure that we're the first choice for residents. So I don't know if that data indicates anything at all. I just want to make sure we're looking into it.
Thank you. Yep, thank you so much.
I think that's all. Thank you. And again, welcome to Edina. Thank you for presenting to us. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have our Middle School Orientation Day and Get Connected Day and Connect and Assess Update with Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson, Dr. Kara Rickenberg, Highlands Elementary School Principal, Tricia Pettis, Southview Middle School Principal, and Jen Carter, Edina High School Assistant Principal. Welcome. and Jen Carter, Edina High School Assistant Principal. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Stanley and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to reflect on the successful implementation of our middle school orientation, Get Connected and Connect and Assess Days that took place at the start of the school year. Tonight, I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Kara Rickenberg, Principal of Highlands Elementary, Tricia Pettis, Principal of Southview Middle School, and Jen Carter, Assistant Principal of Edina High School. As you know, these programs were designed to align closely with Edina Public Schools' strategic initiatives, particularly our commitment to ensuring an equitable and inclusive school culture, fostering a positive learning environment, and engaging parents, schools, and the community. Tonight, we're excited to share our observations and the feedback we've received. We'll be covering three main areas in our presentation. First, a brief reminder of our district's vision, mission, and how these programs support our strategic initiatives. Second, an overview of how the middle school orientation day and Get Connected programs unfolded for our middle and high school students. And finally, the outcomes and feedback from the Connect and Assess Days at Highlands Elementary specifically. These days were implemented to create a smooth transition for our students as they began the new school year, foster a sense of belonging, and provide valuable opportunities for students, families, and educators to connect. We're pleased to report on their success and the positive impact they've had on our school community. We look forward to sharing our insights, the feedback we've received from families and staff, and discussing how these programs have set a positive tone for the academic year. We're also eager to hear your thoughts and answer any questions you may have. So let's begin with a brief reminder of our district's vision and how these programs align with our strategic initiatives. Let's see if this works. Can we see if the presentation can be put up? Not a big deal. I'm just going to keep plugging away. So we'll start with our district vision and mission. As you know, for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive is our district vision. And Edina Public Schools is a dynamic learning community, delivering educational excellence and preparing all students to realize their full potential. And our mission is through academics, activities, and opportunities, we encourage creativity, foster curiosity, and develop critical thinking skills. We support every student's educational journey by creating a caring and inclusive school culture that supports the whole student. So having said that, there are multiple strategic initiatives that align with our efforts to help with the onboarding of students and families to our different schools. Strategy B is about ensuring an equitable and inclusive school culture. Strategy C is about fostering a positive learning environment and whole student support. And then Strategy E is about engaging parents, schools, and community, which we did through these days. So with that, as I said, Tricia Pettis is here to talk about the middle school orientation. And she's going to be sharing some anecdotes from school. Thank you, Tricia.
Good evening. Thanks for having us, everyone. We came to all of you last year and asked for approval for this orientation day. And really, our goal was to give all of our sixth graders an equal opportunity to participate in this orientation experience. Previously, it had been done through a web day in the summer before school started. So the last school year, we had 15% of our students missed that day. So 52 of our kids missed this, you know, onboarding experience. So this year, having it on the first day, we met our first goal and that all kids had access to participate in these shared experiences around creating new connections and understanding routines, and just having a smoother transition to, you know, it's this threshold moment that you only get once, being only one first day. But we had so many other positive outcomes that we didn't even anticipate. And I'm going to share some with, some of those with you today. So we invited all of the sixth graders and anyone who is going to be new to Southview to join us and all of our leadership, student leadership groups. And really, this day was made possible because of our student leaders. And it's, you know, one of our models is seeing our students as resources and using and leveraging them. And so the power of these web leaders and our web facilitators in planning this day, that's what made it so powerful, is our sixth graders were welcomed and onboarded and trained by eighth graders. And they much prefer learning from their peers. And they, they trust in them and look up to them. So also, because of our structure, we have, and at the middle level, we have advisories, and that's kind of their first, their home base where they start every morning. And we have multi-age advisory. So every single teacher has sixth graders in their advisory. So on that first day of school, it's not like just our sixth grade teachers. We're also feeling, you know, the, the weight of onboarding these kids. All of our staff had invested interest in welcoming our students. So everybody started the day with their sixth graders in their advisory. And then the web leaders came and took them off to lead some activities. And Dr. Stanley was able to visit with us and meet in small groups. And then the web leaders, again, just really leading them through fun activities. And this was one of the things that was so, that we didn't think about. But when it came to lunch, all of our eighth grade leaders were helping the sixth graders learn how to do lunch in the lunchroom. And that alone, our, all of our supervisors were, said it's never been so smooth. Imagine 300 kids coming to a lunchroom and trying to figure it out on the first day. And so to have all of them in small groups, and they were eating in their groups with the eighth grade leader, telling them how to go through the lines and what are the expectations of the lunchroom. The lunchroom has still since run so much smoother than it ever has been because of that onboarding with the eighth graders. So that was something we didn't even anticipate. And then midway through the day, then, we welcomed all of our students back. And before I speak to that, we also had all of our brand-new-to-Edina students, our seventh and eighth graders that were brand-new. And our ambassadors had this extra time with them to walk through their schedules and show them parts of the building, and really help those students as well have a, have a positive experience coming into our brand-new school. So just having one grade level, and I'm sure the high school can speak to this as well, one grade level and new students at a time, just the whole morning was felt more calm and more focused. And again, just helps our students feel like, okay, I can do this, not having everybody there at once. So then, then our sixth graders were super excited midday, when we were back in advisory, to welcome their seventh and eighth graders. They were super curious about what that experience was going to be like after having just sixth graders. So we were all really excited to get, to also welcome all of our students for part of the day and have some advisory time with them. And then we did some fun grade level, different, fun kind of rally experiences as well. So we tried to make it special and fun for all of our students, not just our newer sixth grade students. So another testament to how well the day went was day two of the school year. Because our new to Southview students and our sixth graders, they had Get Connected Day before school started. We had a curriculum night where they could come with their families and meet their teachers before school started. And then we had this orientation day. So by the time we came to actually start schedules, they had been able to walk their schedule multiple times. So we didn't have the panicked kids running around, having no idea where to go. All of us teachers were like, why is everything running so smoothly? Why isn't anybody needing help finding their classes? But they had multiple opportunities to get into routines before we actually started classes. So hands down, a huge success if you ask any teacher and, and students and families. It was really, it was really a positive experience. So thank you for supporting that.
Could I ask a quick question? Thank you for that, that experience. I have a Valley View eighth grader and had a similar experience. But I'm just really curious, what was the message to the seventh and eighth graders who are coming back to school about this? To get them engaged and thinking positively about this change that you were embarking on?
Yeah, so, you know, having that multi-age advisory experience, we always lean into our seventh, eighth graders as saying, you're our leaders of our school. You help us. And, and for us, this is our second year. So they got, so our seventh graders got to experience that as sixth graders, so they kind of look forward to then being the leaders. But then also having some specific grade level time. And the seventh and eighth graders, eighth grade teams did fun, like, eighth, like, grade level things to rally and get the kids excited for the school year as well. So having some time together, but then also in grade levels.
Thank you.
Okay, I've also invited Jen Carter, Assistant Principal from the high school. And I know that she's going to detail some of the things that the high school did differently this year, some of the things that they tried, and share some of the feedback that our stakeholders had.
Thank you so much for the chance to talk about Get Connected Day. Our Get Connected Day typically happens the week before school starts. So this year, it was on August 22nd. That's the Thursday before school starts. The annual event is a collaboration between the Edina High School PTO, our student council, and our Hornet mentors, where we welcome people into the building to have their photos taken, where we had over 1,800 photos taken that day. They can check out a Chromebook, they can get their parking pass, they can meet their teachers, walk the building. And then we did have some programs for new families, as well as information about our AP program and signing up for AP, the AP's exams. Some changes that we offered this year is we had the chance to collaborate with the Edina Ed Fund and offer Band Together at the same day. And so they were outside of door three, and we did a lot of things in the months leading to, to have the successful event, to have our campus hosting both of these events at the same time. We had a lot of conversations about open house. And this year, we offered the ability for families to actually walk the schedule. We ran the bell schedule two times. So we wanted to have teachers be able to give information about their classes and grading procedures and just class content with families. And so I do have a couple slides I just want to go over about some of the changes. So here you can see in the first slide is just the participation of Get Connected Day, how satisfied were families? And you can see that those areas are very much in the very satisfied, satisfied neutral. And some were in the dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. But in the second question, we were able to ask in the Thought Exchange, if you attended scheduled teacher open house presentations, how useful did you find them? And you can see that many of the families did not attend. That would kind of match the day of Get Connected Day, knowing that this year, we ran the bell schedule two times and in the past have just given more drop-in experiences with families. And so we did ask that as another question of the respondents, what their preferred interaction type is around Get Connected Day. And as you can see, many of the families prefer informal meet and greets and brief interactions of stopping by. So that is something we can use as data as we plan for next year. One other change that we had this year, which was very motivated by, in August of 2023, Southview offered a sensory hour that was open just to students who noise could be a barrier as they walk through the door the first time. So we had a small number of students that were offered the ability to attend sensory hour, and especially with Band Together outside. We thought it was best to have that sensory hour before the music started outside. And we did survey our staff. And you can see that of the respondents of this, that many were very pleased with the addition of sensory hour. So this is a practice that we will continue in the future.
Thank you, Jen. And to close out our presentation, Dr. Rickenberg is going to talk about Connect and Assess at Highlands.
Thank you. Good evening. This is our third year of Connect and Assess at the elementary level, and each year just gets better. Last year, we added school pictures, which was amazing. I see some nodding heads. So I had much feedback from parents and from students saying, this is just like what we, my siblings do in the middle and the high school. So we continued that this year, and this is true of Highlands as well as each of the other five elementary schools. Other feed, other things that we started implementing last year and really became solid in it this year is all the forms, right? The beginning of the school year has a whole lot of forms. And so as students are meeting with their teachers, the parents are working on filling out the forms and doing all of that. We gathered some information. This is representative of our Highlands families. But then in sharing this with my elementary colleagues, both principals and staff, it mirrors what's happening in each of the elementaries. And so family feedback for Connect and Assess, the relationship piece, right? That's what we always strive for each and every day, is making relationships with their families. And the Connect and Assess really hits home on the number one reason why parents appreciate the Connect and Assess is the opportunity for the teacher to sit down one-to-one with their child and have a conversation. Not only are we doing some of our fast assessments, but they're checking in and having a conversation, getting to know the child. And it's also an opportunity for the parents to get to see the teacher and meet the teacher as well. One of the things that we have really recognized over the last two years in particular is our students that come to school with a little bit of nervousness, a little hesitation. It's a wonderful way to walk the halls and get your routines down for the years where you're going to be dropped off for the bus. Now let's find your classroom. Those are big tasks when you're seven years old. Another big note of appreciation that the parents noted was understanding student needs. One of the things that we have been able to do in the elementary schools since implementing Connect and Assess is being able to start our intervention groups and our other student support groups, ranging from intervention or talent development, or within classroom tier-two supports, much sooner. Typically, it's been around MEA or a little bit later. And we've had them in full swing for a couple of weeks already, allowing us to kind of dig right in and know where the students are. The third point that our parents really appreciated is just preparation for the school year. Even though it starts before the kids come to school, they appreciated the opportunity for the kids to get into their routines. We had conversations with some of our youngest learners' families about things like how to pack for a lunch. Because when you pack a lunch for kindergartners where they need adult help and opening everything, that's a different challenge. And doing much more than assessments is that relationship piece. It's a calm introduction for the families. And as noted, the necessary paperwork was a big, a big perk as well. Families do recognize the importance of the baseline data connection, and I always appreciate it when they, when they note that as well. And so this was one of the other top reports recognizing that they appreciate that and that we're getting that information right away. The fifth one that they noticed, noticed was the community and familiarization. What's interesting is at Highlands, we have 23 classrooms. And so every 20 minutes, there's 23 new families coming into the building. Last year, it was the first time that our families had been introduced to the Raptor system. Because all of our families, when they came in for Connect and Assess, got the practice of providing their photo ID. This year, no big deal. They knew what to do and just things ran very smoothly. The other thing that was different this year as opposed to the last two years is based on data received last fall as well as this past spring, we did adjust Connect and Assess Days to be Friday and Monday. Previous years were Monday and Tuesday. And for the families, they appreciated that opportunity to do both or either of them. And overall, the Connect and Assess Days were viewed as very valuable information, gathering opportunities, helping with parental engagement, creating a strong foundation for the start of the school year. And I can tell you with certainty, I'll, I'll give you a preview of the next slide, the staff loved the Friday and Monday because it allowed us to come together as PLCs with all of this awesome data to start this school year off. But just as a summary for the, the family feedback, one of the concerns that they brought up was that, the Friday and Monday, we noticed for the signups that the signups filled right away from Mondays. And there was openings on Fridays. But most of the staff were very easily able to squeeze in families that weren't able to get a conference scheduled or a Connect and Assess time scheduled on Tuesday or even during some workshop week times. And so there was flexibility. And the other thing too, that we communicate to our families is that if it doesn't work out, yes, we want you to be there. This provides us opportunity, and we will connect with them in the first couple of weeks. And they will get their picture taken at a different time. So there's lots of communication to help them in understanding that. One of the, one of the concerns that was also noted was childcare needs. And to be honest, I wasn't quite sure if this referenced during the Connect and Assess time. Or as you can see in the summary, it talks about with childcare, providing childcare in that interim week of workshop week when Kids Club is closed as they prepare and shift. Because during Connect and Assess, we do provide childcare onsite for child-aged or for school-aged kiddos. And here is the feedback from our staff. And again, this parallels what the- And again, this parallels what the other principals found in their schools, too. They really appreciated the opportunity to do this on a Friday and Monday, to have Tuesday as a regrouping. Okay, these are my kiddos. Let's see what we have. Let's look at our information to have those conversations. In the two previous years, we finished Connect and Assess, 3:30, 4 o'clock on Tuesday, and boom, Wednesday morning, here come our awesome kiddos. And so the time to be able to have those conversations was wonderful. And that was noted several times. And again, noted by the staff that some of our staff, or excuse me, some of our families were not available on Fridays. But we were able to meet the needs that they had for that.
So we tried to give you a snapshot of each level of the organization. We've shared some information with you. What questions might you have?
Board members. Director Gabler?
No, I'm going to defer to Jen.
Oh, sorry. Director Hubie?
I just want to say thank you. Having a child with sensory issues or that need to connect before school starts and having that available to everyone is awesome. We just sort of did our own thing, because we knew that he needed it. And so I think this is just great, and applaud your efforts.
Director Gabler?
Thank you for this report, and thank you for that comment, because I think that is a really important, when we think about each and every. I appreciate how the middle school idea percolated up from our leaders at the middle school and came to us with like a, hey, we'd like to try this, this is our reason why, and then to get this kind of full circle report back of how it went. I just think that is such a great example of collaboration and bringing ideas to the table. So thank you for that. And I agree with the school photos, because we've all been there where we're like, why is there ketchup on your face? Why is your shirt unbuttoned? Whose shirt are you wearing in that school picture, right? So all of those things. So thank you, I was nodding along with that one. There was a lot of discussion about that change for Connect and Assess. I know there was kind of the back and forth. And I thought you did a great job of kind of talking about it was a big win for the teachers to have that split like that. Some of the families were maybe not so sure that it worked so well, and I appreciate how staff really kind of rallied around making it work for families that couldn't fit in. Do you have any numbers on if participation increased, decreased, or once we were able to kind of fit people in, if that stayed the same?
I do, actually, it was about the same. And so I have that in different information. I can share that with you if you'd like me to. It was about the same when I was talking to my staff to understand, you know, both the parent feedback and also the staff feedback. I surveyed the classroom teachers to see, you know, looking at it in percentages, and about 95% both of the years were in attendance for Connect and Assess.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't need specifics, I just, in general, if that was a difference. And I think, you know, if we do decide to go forward with that Friday, Monday, I think, you know, the first year you roll it out, it's new. And now, you know, for the families that are like, oh, we missed Friday, you know, because we had a family vacation planned, now you start to anticipate those types of things in the future. But I do really appreciate that your staff rallied and said, we can fit in extra on Monday, or we'll make it work, so.
One of the things that we did last spring also is in, I believe it was May, perhaps it was early June, we sent communication to our families as a save the date, because when we realized we would be changing it to Friday, Monday. And the conversation that we had as principals is, if we do the Friday, Monday again, we would do that again, and then a reminder in July, and then a reminder in early August as well. But to your point, we've lived it once, and so it'll be on people's radars a little brighter this time.
Yeah, that was the, sorry. Director Gabler brought up my same question, was about the staggered days. And I think that it would be great to track participation and participation amongst different student groups to make sure that, over time, we're not losing specific student groups, and we're keeping our participation as high, because I, so it's a win-win for everyone.
I should also say that one of the practices that we started doing two years ago, so our first year, is that we schedule all of our families that need interpreters first, before we go, before it opens to anybody to sign up. And the reason that we can do that is for efficiencies for interpreters, so that we have, you know, our Spanish-speaking interpreters there for a chunk of time, and then working to provide reminders of when those are scheduled, because a month is a long time.
Right, absolutely, yes. But thank you, all of you, for bringing all this information. I love staggering the day for the kids that are new at the secondary. I think it's great for all of our students, so thank you. Thank you for doing all of this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to our Data Metrics Plan update. So we have Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert. And do we have other guests here that I might see in the audience? Okay, got it. Yeah, I was like, I see somebody in the audience. Yes.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Ellenberg, board directors, colleagues, and community members. Tonight, I am here not only representing Teaching and Learning and Cabinet, but all of our Edina staff by bringing the Data Metrics Plan to all of you as a discussion item. I specifically do want to highlight and thank Greg Gusweiler. He's our Teaching and Learning Data Programming Analyst and Coordinator, who has spent endless hours in work at his computer, as well as in discussions, as well as in rethinking and regrouping, so that we have this report in a way that is manageable for us all to read and understand and respond to. So I do want to applaud his efforts and thank him. He is here tonight, and if we have specific questions from him or other cabinet members, I will be turning to them for some input and support if needed. I also really want to, before I go much further, really recognize our educators. There's a lot of celebration in this report, and that would not be happening without the day-in and day-out hard work that our teachers and administrators are doing directly in our buildings. It's really because of them that we're seeing the progress that we are in so many, in so many of the areas. So our comprehensive assessment plan has been represented as a funnel. In fact, it was perfect. We saw that at our board workshop tonight, that at the top of that funnel is the Data Metrics Plan. And then going down from the top of the funnel, we have our building continuous improvement, school improvement plans, as well as our district-level continuous school improvement plans. From there, we lean into professional learning communities with staff teams, and then individualized student learning goals. The system and the attention to it ensures that we are continually improving to reach our vision and mission and using our strategic plan to do so. So the Data Metrics Plans in front of you tonight, the Data Metrics Plan in its entirety is a two-year plan. And the data in front of you tonight is a mid-year or a one-year check-in on where we are with that two-year plan. The report, as you all know and see in front of you, is broken down, because it's very large. So it's separated into early learning, K-5, middle school, and high school. And then separating them that way, again, it's another way that we've approached trying to make sure that the data is actually actionable as well. Each report has an executive summary, a table of contents, key findings, and action steps. And those action steps are connected also to our strategic plan. There's also a goal progress sheet that has been added. And then there's details of each goal area, broken down by different demographic groups, and an appendix that highlights a couple of key points that have come up over the years for clarification. Before going into each individual report and looking to you for questions and feedback, I do want to highlight that one of the most powerful components of the data that Greg has organized for all of us is the ability to clearly see the areas of celebration. There are many areas where we have met our goals, and there's even many, many more that we are making really positive progress and right on track. The thing for us all to recognize with that is where we see areas of celebration is where we can replicate that work and lean into the things that are happening that are having those positive outcomes. And so when I introduce each section, I'm just going to highlight some quick areas of celebration and then turn it over to you again for discussion and questions. Chair Ellenberg, should we do discussions and questions per report, per area? Okay, perfect. So early learning. The other great thing about tonight is a lot of the things that you're hearing surrounding the Data Metrics Report have also been shared, right? So we just had a great update from early learning that helps us recognize some of the things that they're putting in place. The area of celebration that I really want to lean into here with the Early Learning Center and draw your attention to at the same time is that we had some areas with our teaching strategies gold assessment. Our math, our literacy, and our SCL dropped. And the reason for that, this is the only data point in the plan that is not comparing apples to apples. It's comparing apples to oranges, because the learning in the Early Learning Center prompted them to do a more in-depth assessment, knowing that that's what our kids needed in a developmentally appropriate way. And so you see the kindergarten data has a huge jump, and that data is our kindergartners who went to our Edina Early Learning Center and then had their assessments in Edina kindergarten classrooms. And that huge jump, I think, really emphasizes that that additional learning and that additional in-depth assessment that's happening with TS Gold is correlated and connected. What, the assessments that were being used in TS Gold before were fabulous, right? But there were just like, some assessments have like eight data points that you can collect data on, and there was just a couple of data points that we were collecting data on. Now we're collecting on much, much more. And again, that's where the comparing the apples to the oranges happens. But then when we look at the kindergarten data, that's just a huge celebration. And just to lean into the report that we just heard, they just had professional development on Friday, right? On our professional development day about how to continue to understand and use that data effectively for students. So that's the area of celebration I wanted to highlight there. With that, I'll turn it over to feedback and questions.
Board members, are there questions about early learning? Director Gabler?
I noticed that we do not have, and actually, for anybody watching at home, we had the, we were fortunate to receive an early learning report at our work session earlier that kind of looked at K-12, what we were doing with our early, with our English learners. So I appreciate that, and that kind of gave some nice background to some of the data that we're seeing. Do you, I noticed that we do not have, or at least we don't have a capture of English learners at the Early Learning Center.
Yes. I am wondering, actually, Dr. Bakair, can you speak to that? I knew you could. We've been talking about this, and so I know she has some clarification, because she's helped me with some understanding. I have so much stuff, this is so me. I'll hand this over. A lot of reports coming up.
So with early learning, childhood, the state has slightly different rules than it does for K-12 EL students. So K-12 EL students, you fill out a language questionnaire, and any student who answers yes to one of four questions must be assessed for EL and provided EL services. The state, though, for early learning, only has a requirement for two groups of students. So they just added that it's students who are in VPK, so voluntary pre-K need to be assessed for EL, and then early childhood special education students need to be assessed for EL. This was a fairly new law that has come in at my EL coordinator meetings that I have monthly with MDE. I tell everyone it is a topic of conversation every single month, because it's a different test than the test that you give K-12. And then the services that you provide EL students in ELC is actually not services to the EL student. You are going into the classroom and coaching the teacher. You're not working with the student. So as everybody across the state, this is within the last two years, this law, as everybody across the state is trying to unpack what it looks like, we have a plan for this year where Catherine Gimsey, our EL coach for elementary, will be going in and helping to assess the VPK kids. And then we need to come up with a plan for assessing the, all of the early childhood special ed kids, who we heard there's kind of a lot. So we have to come up with a plan for how to get all of those students assessed.
Okay, thank you for that. So it would be safe to say that next year, when we have a better idea of what the state wants, we might see some numbers in that cell. As far as like, we actually have.
Yeah, so we know they're there. We're trying to figure, we're getting it under control, how to assess them. Once we get that group of kids, we will be able to add that information into the data metrics.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Fabulous, thank you. Okay, so our elementary section has a lot of celebrations. The majority of our goals are reflected as on-track. And I just want to highlight, really, our alignment to our comprehensive literacy plan and the success we're seeing in literacy, and the success and growth that we're seeing in our math and our progress towards meeting those goals. So that's exciting, as we start a math review coming up around the corner. And we definitely are looking in our, our planning at some of those areas, one specific area, and we're going to have our ELA report after this. But that we're leaning into is our third grade drop in our spring-to-spring data. Yep, and with that, we know we've teamed on some action steps around that, specifically around fluency and comprehension. Sometimes when you see your K-2 readers reading more quickly and getting a grasp on language, then we need to adjust and jump into some instruction around fluency and comprehension faster. So our team's already digging into that as an area of growth to look into. With that, are there any questions about our elementary?
Sorry, I have another question. Actually, it's not.
Don't apologize.
This is great. No, but this is, this is, there's so much information, Jody, that your team has pulled together. And Greg, I know you're a huge part of this. I mean, if you geek out on data, this is your meeting to be watching and reading the board packet for, because it's hundreds of pages of this stuff. I wanted to call out something that I saw in our elementary SCL data, in our middle school, and in our high school data, that I think is worth celebrating. And that is that when you look at the data for literacy and for math, yes, you will see gaps among students groups. But when you look at the questions of, do you have a teacher that cares about you? There is no gap. All of our students are scoring at like the 90th percentile. Do you, in the last week, has there been a time that you enjoyed learning? No gaps, 90% across the board. And I think that speaks to the work that our teachers and our principals are doing every day. You know, if you struggle to read, it can be really hard. You don't, it's hard to come to school. And so to feel, to have students report, I like, I know I have an adult that cares about me, and I've been excited about learning, I think that is worth celebrating. Just, it, just as I looked, and it was consistent, elementary, middle, and high school, we see that. So hats off to the people who are making our students seen and feel like they belong.
Absolutely. Thank you for highlighting that.
And yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out. That was, that did jump out, and that was something I was super proud of, especially, like you said, given the, some of the persistent academic gaps that there is from a social, emotional perspective. Really proud to have parity, not complete parity, but pretty close to parity on most of those metrics.
Absolutely.
Thank you for pointing that out. I'm sorry, Director Barry.
Thanks. I just want to comment that something that jumped out at me from this section of the report was, while we've made really good gains in a lot of the goals, was one of the goals that says not on-track, but that we would expect aggressive growth in literacy. And based on national data, you would expect 25% of the students would achieve aggressive growth. And we actually had 42%. And we actually had 42% achieve aggressive growth. And our goal still says, that's not good enough. That just, to me, spoke to the dedication of the staff and how enthusiastic they are about our learners and their thoughts about where they can take these kids. So, I was kind of excited about that one.
That's great. Lean into each and every and the commitment that's really there to get down to that end of the funnel with the student learning goal and knowing our individual students. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think if you have a kid that's on, not on track, it can be hard to feel good about data that is trending in the right direction. But I think that as an institution, as a district, I mean, I'm so proud of these numbers that we're seeing. It's so much work that has been put into. I mean, it's not just literacy, it's the numeracy and the social emotion. And I mean, it's really living our strategic plan through, from every level. And it's really striking. So, thank you. And thank you for presenting it with a overview with colors that I can read.
No, no.
I think I'd add one more thing to what you just said. It's also the fact that the goal is high, right?
Yes.
Because as we know a statistic, you can have them spin any way you want in terms of depending on what your context is. And so the fact that our goal is not a low goal, it's not like a bare minimum goal. It's, this is where we want to be with our learners and our effect of doing that. And we're on the right trend and so on and so forth, which is great. But it's also because we're striving to be at the right level. And we're not kind of, we're not shirking that responsibility, even though it says not meet on a few situations, we're still in the right direction. So, I hope that there's some context, not only of all the great work that's been done and so on and so forth, and even if we're not hitting every goal, just like we talked earlier in the work session, continuing improvement. This is where continuing improvement is, right? That we continue to make inroads in this area to be able to make that, and we're not setting ourselves a lower goal so that we can get green. We want to set the right goal to make sure we're having the impact on the learner.
Absolutely. It's our vision, right, for each and every. Okay, which is a perfect transition to middle school. Because we did see some areas more in middle school, really, that reflected the typical and aggressive growth as, you know, orange in terms of the color. And that is an area where leaning into the fact that the national norms would expect 25% of our students have aggressive growth and 35% typical. And I know that's noted under those charts. I just think it's important for us, and you all brought it up as well, that really when we put those numbers together, a national norm would be that we have 60% growth across those areas. We are not going to shirk our responsibilities for each and every and make sure we're not, we are getting to that funnel of student goals at the very bottom. And our teachers and our students and our administrators are doing incredible work with their building continuous and school improvement, continuous school improvement plans and putting into action those plans to get to each and every student. So, that transition to middle school is something I just did want to note. And then I think of really, a fun area of celebration is our science data. We want to continue to see that increase, but our science teams have really specifically had an interesting review process. They started it before COVID, then they had delays during COVID, they stuck through some persistence and getting new curriculum and new resources to support the instructional pedagogy that they're providing. And they are a pretty dynamic team. All of our teams are dynamic, but just calling out sometimes we, with our focus on literacy and math and SEL, sometimes that's an area where I can overlook to celebrate. So, I wanted to celebrate that within the middle school data very specifically. Any questions or feedback on middle school?
I actually have a question. When we started implementing the science of reading and training our teachers on the science of reading, we started with early elementary school.
Yes.
And do we know as those students progressed, our probably would have been second grade have been the fir, I guess, the first round of students that we were able to touch? Do we know what grade those students would be in now? And are we able to see any correlation between how our students are doing now or how our students, because they were involved in the science of reading? There's any correlation between that? And the reason I'm bringing this up is a reminder to our community that, of the length of the process to train all of our teachers on the science of reading and that we're still working on that and we're actively training secondary and working on that right now. And I was wondering if any of our elementary schools have hit middle school yet? And any elementary school students have hit middle school yet? And I don't believe they have, but I just wanted to verify with you. That was a very long, roundabout way to ask you that question.
I think that's an important question though, right? And when you ask it, I'm counting back and know, we, in our first cohort of teachers, it was a mixture too, right? So, there were maybe a couple of first kindergarten, second grade teachers. But even if it was a second grade student, getting that from a teacher who was engaged, they would only be in fifth grade right now.
Okay.
And so that would be a small number of fifth graders, very small number of fifth graders. And now we would have more fourth graders who had their teachers in their early years further along in their training in that first volume.
So, it will still take multiple years to see a progression starting in our youngest grades.
Yes, yes.
Of impact. And I just want to make sure that when we're communicating our investment we've made in literacy, the time we're making in literacy, that it still is a multi-year process, not only for teachers to be trained, but for it to be fully ingrained and implemented in an institution.
Absolutely. And we'll hear more about that in our ELA report, but it is a really important point.
Director Gable?
I have two questions here. You spoke about science and it was nice to see that number trending upwards and also thinking, how can we support our science teachers? Because, you know, this is a relatively new curriculum. Can you remind me how long Amplify has been?
We, it will be, this is the third year of Amplify at the middle school. And I think another important point with that goes back to elementary as well in a similar thread of Chair Allenberg, is that elementary is only in its second year of implementation of a new science curriculum. And as we know, there's that, that vertical alignment, right? And before this implementation, our past resource was used with Fidelity for quite a while, but over time, that slips without the attention to all the systems that are needed around it. So, we're really excited to see how the impact Director Gable, of that elementary implementation will also have on our middle school students.
Great, thank you. And then I had a question around middle school activities. I was actually really surprised to see how low that number was. And I was curious, how are we defining activities? Because I could totally see a middle schooler being like, I'm not in anything. And their parents are like, are you kidding me? You're in 15 activities.
Like, right. They are Edina activities, right? And so they have to be involved in sports here in Edina. And I'm going to look to Greg, is that only captured for eighth graders?
So, it's high school athletics plus middle school sports and then anything offered through community yet.
So, they could be part of like, let's say, the Edina Swim Club, which is a community club, and they would not be counted in this number?
Right, right. Because we're not able, well.
That's what I was wondering when I saw that number. Because in Minnesota, middle school sports are mostly run through community organizations and not the school.
Right, right. So, that's, so that number isn't maybe as really accurate as, okay, okay. That's an interesting, that's.
Yeah, I think it gets really tricky. It's accurate as it can be for us and what we have control over and what we're able to monitor and really capture that data and what Greg is able to pull out of our systems.
And yet we know when students are involved, whether it's, you know, we have more control over the programming we provide, of course, but when they're involved, it strengthens a community, it, you know, it's technically can help with school. So, okay, all right.
And I think another piece with that is with all of these data points, they're, you know, they're, we call them universal data points. So, they're like the highest level of data point that we can get. And with all of them, if we want to respond, we need to do more digging, right? So, there's some gap data there too, that we could engage in maybe some more surveys or, you know, focus groups with families to dig into that a little bit more so that we're not making assumptions that, because we do know that we have so many families involved in, in areas that we can't capture that data. But with all of these data points, we always want to say, oh, we see something, let's dig in more so that we can respond with the root cause analysis that's accurate and impactful.
And I think for me, why that's still an important question, even if we can dig into it, is because we know there are kids who might not have opportunities to engage and would benefit from it. So, if we can better understand that number, it might help us identify those kids and connect them to those activities.
Yes.
Well, and the other part too is like, you know, ancillary things like transportation and those types of things that we may not, you know, that may not show up on this, but are huge indicators. Because if somebody has to be home in a bus, that's the only way to get there and that type of thing.
Dig into what might be barriers, if there are any. For sure.
The other thing I just wanted to note outside, this isn't related to the activities, but when we were talking about the different content areas, is that letters doesn't work in isolation from, for instance, school improvement planning, the continuous school improvement planning process. And that the continuous school improvement planning process doesn't work in isolation from connect and assess days and all of those pieces. And so, we talked a little bit earlier, Assistant Superintendent Swenson shared that, you know, he and I are out and he is out with principals once a month to really work on those areas. And then the other thing that I just wanted to say, I really truly do want to give a shout out to our teachers on the accelerated, accelerated growth. And yes, you are absolutely right, Director Birdman, we have set the bar high. And it's important to note that three years ago, we weren't using FastBridge data to the level that teachers have learned to use this data, really truly learned to go in and analyze with the support of our coaches and our principals. And so, it is phenomenal, even though we haven't reached that goal and we will continue to still strive toward, and I really do believe we can get pretty close to the goals that we've set. We just cannot minimize, I don't want to minimize, the impact that we're seeing for teachers when you get 42% accelerated growth. And the growth piece is what works to eliminate the achievement disparities. And that's why we wanted to have that in the data metrics plan.
I was just going to echo one other thing. I'm glad you said that, Dr. Stanley. The thing that I look at too, in a reminder where I get my mind in the contextual part of what this report is doing. It's telling us not only where we were spring of '23, it tells us where we want to get to is spring of '24. This is just a midpoint to that process. And so you already talked about earlier that we're already taking the steps necessary to start to do the things that Dr. Stanley was just talking about, which is then, we're still going for the goal for spring of '24. And the FastBridge data and the way the study matrix plan is working and the way in which you're processing this, it's making it tangible in the moment now, trying to work this through, not waiting to see, well, where are we in spring of '24? Oh, well, we missed the goal. Now, what are we going to do? That's the biggest, from what I recall from my three-plus years being here, that was what the benefit of FastBridge was giving us. Because it also then gives the teacher the identifications of, here's where you can intervene with this individual student.
Yeah, FastBridge is a really critical part of, of the work and the attention to those individual students.
And I think your, your wonderful point about it's not on an island unto itself, it's a part of all the things that are going, they're all interconnected. But this is our way of measuring our effectiveness with all those different elements that we then have. So, for anyone who had ever listened to this or so on and so forth, whenever they see a not on track, it's really important to understand that context. If we're coming in spring of '24 and we're not on track and we didn't see improvement from where we were now or so on and so forth, then that would be more concerning. This gives us paths along the road.
Absolutely. And because of the, the leadership of Dr. Stanley and the whole entire comprehensive assessment plan, the two-year plan leans into that. And we'll be, we'll be discussing and going through what steps we need to take for our next plan, right? And what adjustments need to happen, how we can continue to level up and lean into our vision and mission. But it is, it is all, the plan as well as all the action steps connected are, are coming together nicely. I think so many reports tonight, whether it's workshop or tonight at the board meeting, enhance that and just reiterate all the focus and the collaboration of so many things coming together to have these outcomes for students.
And I think it is important, because I can't remember if it was Karen or Erica said it earlier, it's not that we're then satisfied when then, an individual, or I think maybe it was Cheryl, when one student is not hitting their goal.
Right.
Like, oh, well, our overall goal might be met, but one individual student's not, so we're okay with that. No one has said that, no one is banking on that, there isn't a single person in this organization that's doing that. We still have to be responsible for each and every.
Yeah.
So, I think that's, data can be used, again, to tell what story someone wants to tell. That's not what we're doing. We're trying to, this is the story, not what we want it to be or what we hope it to be. This is what it is. And we saw that obligation with our mission, vision, to be able to make that happen. So, I think that's just really important to, again, contextualize that in this presentation.
Yeah, very well said.
Can I ask a quick question about, you know, in workshop, we talked a lot about English learners and the newcomer count?
Yes.
How does that play into like, you know, there's obviously some gaps in some of the things like that? Like, how does this help you address some of those newcomers and like, is that, is that data normalized enough to know like interventions you can make and what kind, whatnot and identify along the way? Or is that a challenge?
Yeah, no, the data is pinpointed enough. There are unique language needs in terms of learning the language, right, that come in play when you are creating intervention plans or response plans for students. But because our teachers and administrators are looking at each individual student and we're continuing to learn and grow and understand, we're able to create unique plans for all of our students. Excited, really excited about all that Dr. Bakair is leading in that area, even just as she shared tonight, having a coach, right, very specific for elementary. That coach is learning and growing and teaming with Dr. Bakair and our administrators to say, okay, this, this newcomer might, is ready for an intervention. Let's put him right into that phonemic awareness intervention that fits for them. And then maybe this newcomer's not quite ready yet, right? They're just soaking in everything that's coming at them as a new learner. And it really is, in my experience as a teacher, I had some newcomers that were, I, you know, they're, they're all different, right? And some were ready for certain things and others weren't. So, it goes to the bottom of that funnel and those, those plans. And it's exciting, again, it's exciting to hear all the things that are happening within that English language department earlier today and the continued focus there.
Thanks for that, Jodi. And I would add, it is the complexity that we talked about and that you're speaking to about our, even our newcomers, as Dr. Bakair shared, because several of our newcomers are coming in at level three, level four, for the general community, level six would be a person who's proficient in a language. And level three, level four, meaning that they can, you know, they can access the content, they're most likely have strong literacy skills, they're literate in their first language. And so, that's the complexity, is really being able to dig into each and every one of those students. And the thing is, we're at the point with Dr. Bakair's work, coupled with all of the work that's happening with teaching and learning, where we're learning to do that. You know, we're really understanding the complexity of our, of our English learners and learning to do that. You know, we're really understanding the complexity of our, of our English learners and learning to do that.
Okay. Our high school specific report, there's a lot of depth, right, in each individual report. And when we get to the high school, there is more depth as we look at different data points that are really trying to emphasize how important it is that we have our students with a college and future or career readiness. So I, I, there were just, our world language program in Edina continues to astound me. There was a huge growth in our bilingual seals. And the number that we started with is very, very high in comparison to other districts. So that's an area of celebration. And another one that I think is unique beyond the data points of test scores is our ACT results, something that I know we've highlighted in some recent marketing with Daphne. But the increase in the number of students that are getting a three plus on their AP exam was high. And that was an area, too, where the gaps in our demographics was not as distinct as others. And so celebrating that. And our MCA data is really, really strong in all areas. And there's a lot of targeted efforts to continue to increase that and allow students the opportunity to really show what they know in relation to the standards. So a lot of high school data, and I welcome your feedback and questions.
Director Gabler?
I have three things, two of them you kind of said, but I want to really draw attention to on page six of the high school report. We already have, I believe, Dr. Stanley, you probably know this number because you're a competitive lady. We have a very large number of our students who take AP exams, correct?
We do.
And when you look at the percentage of our students who earned a three or higher, it went from 86 to 91%. That is astonishing. And that's, I, I just wanted to call that out because I think our AP teachers, hats off to them for getting our students ready for that, and our AP students for achieving that level of success. And you talk about a confidence booster going into college, or even having the confidence as we look of trying to get more students who maybe haven't been served by those classes into those classes. What a confidence boost to have that and know you have college credits behind you. So I just wanted to call that out. And then I also wanted to call out our MCA information on page, towards the end. The part that jumped out here to me is, you know, MCA is, if you talk to any educator, they're like, it's kind of a love-hate relationship because it's one data point. And it's, although it's not perfect, it is currently what we have. And I really, I wanted to say, like, the fact that our high schoolers to see a 30% jump in math at the high school, and how they've incentivized students to take it because we get penalized if we don't have students taking it, I just, I want to call that out, too, because that doesn't just happen. That's a lot of intentional work from people that are, are doing that. So because I'm a galvanizer and an enabler, sometimes I come across of, let's look at all these great things. I do want to point it, point out one thing. There are lots of things in this report where, where we're working. We're continuing to strive towards that. One of the things that I, I, not tonight, but it was, drew my attention was that drop in struggling reader scores for our ninth graders in that class. Just better digging into that, you know, not tonight, obviously, but better understanding that, how we can support those teachers that are rolling that new, it's a relatively new class out, so just better understanding that. So thank you to you, Greg, thank you to you, and to all the people that had a hand. I'm sure Bethany, you were involved in this somehow. So thanks for giving us lots of reading over the last weekend.
You know, another thing I wanted to point out, I think from my perspective, one of the most important ways that we track successes of students are successful in whatever they want to do after they leave Edina Public Schools. And have we prepared them for their next step in life? And I just wanted to point out the SLEDs data, State Longitudinal Educational Data System data, that it's the most recent data that they have access to. But for the class of 2021, 91% of college-bound students persisted into their second year. And 85% made it to their third year. And I think that given everything that we hear around us regarding COVID and the mental health of students, which is very alarming, I'm not, it's very alarming and a very real issue. I'm very proud of those numbers and the persistence of our students and how prepared they are academically, socially, and emotionally for their next phase in life. And it doesn't mean they have to go to college, but the fact that we do have so many kids that do go to college, that's a big deal for me. So thank you to everybody that is involved in that.
I have another question.
Oh, Director Aaron.
Just about the activities part of it. I noticed the point about, you were talking about just the disparity between some of the, the gap in extracurricular, between white and Asian and black and African. You know, there's, and then the talk was about adding an Equity Leadership Council for that piece of it. Is there a reason why that'd be separated from like the SAC committee and like not part of that group at all? Or is, is there an opportunity to combine those two groups to, to, you know, go through the approval processes or, or whatever committees are there for that purpose?
That's a really good question.
Okay.
I could follow up with that.
Okay.
I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
But a great question.
Do board members have any other questions or comments regarding the data metrics plan as a whole, now that we've seen the early childhood through high school pieces?
I think I just wanted to say one thing, Dr. Stanley. The evolution of this data metric plan. Kudos, it's phenomenal from where it started to where it is today. Not only with your leadership, but with everyone who's been involved echoes to everyone. But I just remember the original conversations around it. And to go from where we were to where we are today and imagine where we might be going as the years continue on, I just think it allows a level of consistency that I think we sometimes lose when we don't have something like this. All the seven people along here will change over time. Not the eighth person, by the way, just the seven of us. And so being able to have that regardless of who's in the chair is also another kind of foundational element, I think, that comes to play. And I think there's a lot of data people in this room and at this table. And sometimes data is a way for us to make sense of things that are hard for us to get our mind wrapped around. And when we talk about performance, you know, in an excellent environment, metrics are not the only way to demonstrate that. But it sure does a great job of foundationally letting you know from place to place how you're doing. And so I just wanted to at least echo that, considering where it was. And I'm sure Erica could even speak longer to this because she was around a lot longer than we were. But it's kind of like amazing to think about where it's gone. And it seems to be getting more and more through all of your efforts. We are getting to where we want to get to on this. And it's not so much for the board's use, this is the key thing that I always like to say. Data is data. If you don't know what you're using it for, who cares? What I see in these reports, as we've been going on every six months, we're showing how we're using it. And that's just an excellent part of the kind of culture and fabric that we are building and expanding here in Edina. So I just wanted to at least call that out. Thank you. Because it's, it's an amazing effort in that regard.
Thanks, Director Burman. I just want to say, I mean, this is completely, completely a team effort, right? You know, when we started looking and building at this data metrics plan, I've shared many times that I have a district instructional leadership team that include many of the people that are here and principals. And they really worked with me to, to develop that. And we're continuing to make it user-friendly as possible. Thank you to Greg, because we are consistently pushing on him for the presentation of it. And, and more than anything, he goes to Tableau trainings to learn from his peers and to build his craft around this so that we can get better at this. I am so, I could not be more proud of our principals because they really do understand. Their continuous school improvement plans are connected to our data metrics plan. And they are building that out. And it takes a lot, quite honestly. I'm going to brag on them because it takes a lot to build coherence in a system in this way. And they are all in. And so I appreciate all the cabinet, principals, our APs, our deans, and everybody in teaching and learning and the other departments that are making this happen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming, Greg. I should have asked a really, yeah, a really granular question, so you got to come up. But we're going to move on to our comprehensive literacy plan and science of reading professional development update. We have Director of Teaching and Learning Jody D. St. Hubert back up, along with Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning Bethany Van Osgood and Sandra Harley, who's our elementary literacy coach and internal letters trainer. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley.
Oh, will you turn the mic on really fast? Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board and community. It's getting to be a long night and we're just so happy to be here. We want to be succinct, but we also have a lot of things to celebrate and, and passionate people that want to speak and share our story. And the way that these board reports are weaving together tonight is really kind of cool to sit and, and listen to. So thank you for inviting us to present our comprehensive literacy plan. We know you read the board report. So this presentation is going to focus specifically on the highlights around our letters implementation. As you know, I'm Bethany Van Osgood, Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, and this is Sandra Harley. She's one of our literacy coaches who you've heard from before. So you're going to get to hear a lot of amazing things about her work around letters in the classrooms with teachers. So we're going to talk really quickly about the READ Act. I know you've heard of it. So the READ Act was important legislation that was passed this last summer, a year ago, 2023. And a critical component of the READ Act is a commitment to have all of our teachers trained in the science of reading. And so Minnesota school districts have to have all of their teachers trained around the science of reading in two different phases. And so this slide is just kind of laying out for you. Phase one, there's an earlier due date, which you'll see in just a minute. But these teachers are pre-K teachers who are already further along in letters. And then 612 intervention and special education teachers. And then phase two, we will bring on our secondary teachers. They're still working to approve the platform, the PD platform for secondary. So the READ Act legislation requires that all teachers in phase one be trained in 2026. And so what I want to share with this slideshow, or it's this slide specifically, is just the timeline that Edina actually started back in 2021. So we started a couple of years, if not three years, before many of the other districts started their letters initiatives. Our teachers were eager to get on board. And so as we go through the timeline, you can see how each year we just added a layer of more staff and depth, really, around the, the training that they were getting. So we have, right now, in 2024, we've got 183 teachers who are finished with volume one. Sandy's going to speak more about volume one. And we've got our 612 special education teachers that are starting now also. We are poised and ready to bring on our secondary staff. We started with them in ASPIRE. You heard about that last year when we presented. So they started in ASPIRE, having some science of reading training. But we're ready to formally do that as soon as the state approves that platform. But by 2026, we'll have all of our teachers trained in the science of reading, which is just, just ahead of what the state has expected us to do. So we're, we're on track, if not a little ahead of the game. Just noted to the, the note at the bottom is, we're waiting on the state to approve the secondary plan. And so we're, we're ready to implement that and our teachers are ready also as soon as they approve that. So with that, our teachers are reporting great things around letters. I find that one of the exciting things about this is that they truly appreciate the training that is so extensive. You know how extensive it is, 144 hours in total. And they appreciate it because they're seeing results on, on their students. And that's the best way to motivate any teacher, right? So 92.6% of teachers says, say that letters will impact their, positively impact their classroom instruction. And 100% of teachers that were involved in ASPIRE said that that was something that they can apply in their classrooms right away. And you can see in the data that that's, that's really starting to have an effect. So this is just a snip from the board report, but I just wanted to reiterate, you were asking some really good questions around, I can't remember who, I think it was, Chair Allenberg asked questions around the cohort that started with letters. And Sandy and I immediately got out our data and started looking and tracking through. But three years ago, if you look fall to fall, you can see the fall to fall data. So this is showing different kids, but it's showing the rise in the system, right? So an 8% increase in fast bridge early reading. I won't go through all of them, but you can see even some double-digit increases in there for students receiving special ed services, which, again, just speaks to us closing the gap and doing some really great things. Again, Dr. Stanley says it's a village, it takes all of us, right? And so really working together to see these increases, and so it's just really exciting. So what I, I found this quote to be really meaningful because the, the actual training isn't what's, what's changing the world, right? Education is changing our people and our people are changing the world. And one of the people that's doing the most work around here is sitting to my left. And so Sandra, I'm excited to, to pass the clicker over to you. But before I do that, I just want to say that she's been, she's a trained facilitator now for letters. So she's been doing cohorts of teachers and we've been capturing some data. And I just wanted to read a couple of quotes around her facilitation. One teacher said, Sandra's an excellent facilitator who keeps a PD very engaging with group talk and hands-on activities. She was awesome, very engaging, gave us a lot of time to share ideas. And this is really impressive. But 100% of teachers in her PD sessions said, 100% said that this PD will have a positive impact on me and my instruction in my literacy block. So with that, I'm going to let her tell the fun stories about all the teachers.
Good evening. Okay, so, if you guys skip the slide here, here we go. And so letters is really made up of two volumes. We have volume one, volume two.
We just shift the microphone?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's important.
Thank you.
That is important. Okay. And so letters is made up of two volumes. Volume one, which is, it consists of four units, and then also volume two, which is another four units. And so as Bethany mentioned, we have 183 teachers that are fully trained in volume one. And with all of those same teachers being fully trained in volume two by the end of our academic school year. And so volume one is really around phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency. And then volume two is vocabulary comprehension. And so it is critical that our Edina teachers are fully immersed in the science of reading research. And so volume one, unit one, is really where all that research lives. We talk about the five theoretical models, and it is the why around everything that we're doing. And so teachers are collaborating around the research, they're engaged in the research, they're building the models as they are learning about the research. And then finally, they are making connections between those theoretical models so that they walk away with a really in-depth understanding of how the brain learns to read and write. And so there were several mindset shifts that we kind of went through as we were engaged in our professional development. And those mindset shifts forced us into some really solid instructional shifts. And so teachers are putting interventions in place for each and every student at risk of not meeting end-of-year benchmark. And so what you're looking at here is a header to a document. And this document lives at every one of our elementary sites and it lives at every grade level. And so in teacher groups and our PLCs, we're able to capture the names of the students that are at risk. We talk about the supports at tier one. We're aligning and making connections to those supports at tier two and three. We are looking at diagnostics together. We're talking about those opportunity gaps and then following up every step of the way, of course, with progress monitoring. And so this is really our district promise around each and every student. We want to make sure that our students are getting the access and the opportunity that they deserve to be skilled readers. And I also just wanted to add that teachers are developing a growing sense of confidence and commitment as this knowledge of theirs is growing. And so that's been a really positive thing. Another instructional shift was that teachers are teaching all five pillars of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency. phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension at every grade level, kindergarten through grade five. Whereas we may have thought, depending on when we graduated, that we taught phonemic awareness and phonics at kindergarten, first, and second grade, and then we taught vocabulary comprehension at the intermediate grade levels. That is no longer a thing. We have to teach all the pillars at every grade level. It is no longer the learning to read at the K-2 level and then reading to learn at the 3-5 level. And so this is a visual from Fastbridge, just indicating all of those pillars that need to be taught at every single grade level. And so with that, I'm going to walk you through one of the pillars, which is fluency, and what that looks like at kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and how that grows into fifth grade. And so this is a kindergarten teacher, and he is teaching very explicitly how to handwrite the letter U. He is, students are using their arms and doing the big circles in the air and making the letter U. They're taking their two fingers and they're tracing it on their leg. They're tracing the letter U on their shoe, on the carpet, just providing students an opportunity to practice the skill that they were just taught. Then students are going back to their seats, and there is more practice around how to handwrite the letter U. And I say this because there is a lot of developing research around handwriting and the impact on kids later on in their school year, especially with, when we think about students with markers of dyslexia, students that are trying to engage in composition, things like that. Handwriting fluency is very significant. These are kindergarten first grade students. This is a fluency work that they're doing around phonemes, the sounds, right? And this is consistent. It's every day. Kids have so many minutes that they partner read. And so you can imagine the impact of what this has on students that, again, are practicing the skills that they're being taught. Fluency practice using decodable text. We also have fluency practice at the text level. We have one student utilizing a timer, and one student is using a tracking protocol as another student is reading. Hugely impactful. I want to back up for just a second. And just, I just want to point out that fluency is really the heart and soul of all of our work. It is so significant on so many levels. Okay, and the last shift, our instructional practice I'm going to speak to, are that teachers are making sounds tangible for students by explicitly teaching articulatory gestures using mirrors and our sound wall tool. This is a kindergarten teacher. She is building a great level of anticipation in her classroom around unlocking the new sound. She is providing explicit language around the manner and place of articulation. Do we have a stop sound? Do we have a continuous sound? Is our voice on? Is our voice off? Kids are looking in the mirrors, and they are engaging and making, and they're understanding that sounds can be tangible. And teachers are acknowledging the research that when sounds are heard through the ears, they are ephemeral and they disappear as soon as they're heard. So, we want to really be really intentional about making sounds tangible for kids. Okay, and so last, the question is, how would you describe the impact that the science of reading knowledge has had on your students? It changed my scores. And these are comments directly from a survey. It changed my scores. And I'm not going to read them all. I'll just go ahead and flip through them. Last one. The why behind it, right? It's the why behind everything that we are doing. And so just want to end, just sharing that this is a very exciting time for educators. And I am super, super proud of our teachers. They are working so hard. They are working collaboratively, and they are meeting the needs of more and more of our students. So, thank you.
And we're now happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Amazing work. Board members, questions? Director Berry.
Hey, so your description of place, manner, voice, using the mirrors for articulators looks a lot like my graduate-level speech and language pathology courses. And I'm wondering if we've seen any carryover into reduced referrals for speech services.
I wonder if Jody Remsing would know that. Have we seen a decrease in speech referrals since starting letters? Do you know?
So, we don't know our speech referrals. We're really focusing on our numbers right now as far as identification.
So, our speech identification numbers are high in our district. And so one of the things that we've been doing is working with our district speech pathologist and looking at why our numbers are high. And one of the things that they said that they really think is to our advantage is that we have the letters training and that our teachers are really working on this. And they feel that when letters is fully implemented and teachers have received all of that training, that that will really help reduce the number of speech referrals. And so while we aren't really seeing those results just yet, our speech pathologists wholeheartedly believe in the training and remain very optimistic that they will see those benefits later on.
Director Hubie. How are students in Norbendale and the Spanish dual-language programs impacted by this? I know my kids are in Norbendale, expect delays until third grade, et cetera, et cetera. So, are they going to be even more impacted because they haven't had this? Or do they have it? Like, just some questions around that.
Are you comfortable? Yeah.
Very good question. And so our teachers at Norbendale have had the letters training, and they have created sound walls in French. And even though the language is different and the phonemes are different, the sounds in the language, all the practices are the same, right? And so they've created sound walls. They're still teaching students the articulatory gestures around the sounds. A lot of those sounds are the same. And so I think they would say that has been extremely valuable. And then as far as our Spanish dual-language, they haven't yet gone through the science of reading training. They are starting, they have their courses ready to go. They haven't had any of their online training yet. But they are, they are taking part in OL and LA training. And so, again, they haven't started yet. But the practices are the same, right? When we think about the reading brain, the circuitry, and how a student learns to read and spell is the same. It doesn't matter, right, if they're an Yale student or a student in a Norbendale school or a Spanish dual-language. So, they, the teachers are able to make those connections to the theories.
Okay. And then, do you think this would help identify students with reading other issues in those programs? My son wasn't identified with learning to spell until third grade. And so I'm just, like, because this practice is in place, will that give us more insight into maybe some of those, those kids who are?
Struggling readers.
Struggling readers, even in French or Spanish or whatever.
Mm-hmm. I think 100% absolutely. It's giving us a lot of insight. As a coach, I'm engaged in a lot of these conversations with teachers. And really, it's analyzing all of the diagnostics that were provided to us through our letters work. So, through letters, there's several different diagnostics around each of the pillars. And they, that's part of the bridge to practice the application piece that they have to then submit as they, as they experience these diagnostics. And once they go ahead and initiate the diagnostic and we're analyzing them with, with the teachers. And so they've gotten really good at having those conversations. That said, we still have some work to do. So, does that, does that answer your question?
Director Mian.
Yeah, just from looking at our data metrics plan, we see that achievement gaps are still persistent, you know, are still persisting. Are we able to look at the cohort of students taking letters training and seeing all these increases? Are our achievement gaps still persisting in those groups of kiddos that have gone through letters trainings? Or do we have statistical significant numbers yet of that? Can we break that down where it makes sense yet? Do we see, is it normalized, or is that something where we still have identifiable gaps?
We still have work to do. We still have work to do. And we're seeing greater increases in some of our student populations that we need to close gaps for. And we still have work to do. We're, Dr. Bakair shared how we have a Yale coach now who's coming on board. And she's starting to meet with our literacy coaches. We meet every Friday. And so the analogy that I use is it's like we understand where our light needs to shine brightest, and we need to work together to do that. And so we definitely still have work to do, and we're seeing really promising results. We just need to keep doing the work.
And could I add something?
Please.
Nate and I were out at a school last week for a quarterly school improvement plan check. And that principal brought back the data for kindergarten, first, and second grade. 100% of the Black students in first and second grade, I don't know if you still have that little sheet of paper, but 100% of them had met benchmark. I mean, the gap was eliminated in that school. And so that's what Bethany is talking about. We are making progress. I think they were at 78% of their students who identify as Latino, meeting their benchmarks. So, we are making progress there. We have, the gap has been around for a while. And I said when I started here, I said to everyone, if anybody can eliminate achievement disparities, Edina Public Schools is the one that can do that. And so we are working on that, but we are seeing some incredible gains. It's pocket right now. We need to make it consistent across the board. Which, again, I'll just reiterate, that's why it isn't just letters. It isn't, you know, just a data metrics plan. It's got to be everything working together.
I have a question. It's around the assessment data. And I was wondering, right now, and I know why, it's students that are performing below 50th percentile are marked to be looked at individually. And I was wondering if, as an organization, if you guys have taken a look at students that are at risk or that are trending towards potentially being below 50%? For example, a student has met benchmark for kindergarten first grade, and they're suddenly a certain percentile below. Because we've seen over, I mean, we've seen, and data tells us that a lot of kids get diagnosed with learning disabilities, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And so I'm just wondering if there's also, or if there's a consideration to look at, if students have dropped a certain percentage, but they might not be at 50%, they're at 60%. Should we have our eye on a student that has trended so far and is trending down, not necessarily at 50%, do they also need to be looked at because they're not performing how they used to? And we just know statistically that there might be something going on.
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the beautiful things about Fastbridge is we test three times a year. And so when we're testing three times a year, in the in-between times, any student who falls below the 50th percentile is getting an intervention and progress monitored. So, we're able to track those trends, and the coaches are doing an amazing job meeting in PLCs and looking at that data. You saw that chart that Sandra showed, where they're tracking exactly the interventions that they're getting. One thing that it's, I think is important is when Fastbridge will, they'll, they'll cut, they'll give us a cut score at the 40th percentile when they say that we want to service kids in intervention below the 40th. Well, Edina, we cut that at the 50th percentile. So, those kids between the 40th and 50th, we're still servicing them because of what you're talking about, right? Because those are kids that just kind of ride that line sometimes. The other thing we look at is growth. And that growth component, especially when we get to winter, that's a huge time where we can pause and say, okay, you know, this, Sandra is at the, you know, she was toggling around the 50th percentile, but she made flat growth. So, that's the other component that Fastbridge gives us that allows us to kind of, I don't know, again, shine our light, right, on those students. But I can't say enough how these coaches are meeting with teachers, and they know each and every child. They can, they can show you and look at that. So, they're tracking this so carefully. Principals are sitting in on those data meetings. So, there are so many measures put in place to help avoid that. You know, just having the screening process in place like that, and the growth measures, I should say, also. Yeah. It's a good question.
Director Gabor.
I just wanted to point out, in case board members missed it or the public missed it, in your actual narrative report on page 17, we were talking about colors and how we like colors here. I like, this is this colored coded graph that shows the cohorts over years. And that helps me because sometimes I wonder, do we have students like Chair Allenberg that are weaving in and out? So, we see a snapshot when we see the, you know, data metrics plan. But this kind of shows longitudinally how these kids are doing as their cohort moves from kindergarten to fourth grade. So, that's worth a look because actually, when you look at that, we have quite a number of grades that are an increase across the years. So, that's, that's a good graph there.
Before we wrap up, I just wanted to say thank you. And as a parent of a kid that got lost in the system and is now in college, I, this actually makes me super emotional because I look at the work you're doing and I think about, wow, my kid could have benefited from this. So, I just want to thank you. It's changing kids' lives and their ability to perform well in school. Sorry. It does make me emotional. So, it's a big deal. So, thank you. Okay, on that. Yeah. We will move to, where are we on our agenda?
Graduation requirements.
Oh, great. Graduation requirements. We have Director of Teaching and Learning Jody D. St. Hubert. And it looks like we have High School Principal Paul Patel and Assistant Principal Jenny Johnson.
You guys pulled third shift.
Yeah.
Yes, and we do have a presentation, if that can be put up when possible. That would be great. Thank you. So, good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, board directors, colleagues, and community members. I'm excited to be here again tonight with Assistant Principal Jenny Johnson and Principal Paul Patel to talk about graduation requirements. Oh, good. Thank you for getting the presentation up. Appreciate it. On August 20th, as well as September 24th, we had discussions on graduation requirements at the board workshops. Our goal tonight is to have another discussion with the intent of determining next steps for action at the November 4th board meeting. The board report, which you have reviewed, and that's in front of you, has links to each report and presentation. And the detailed information in the reports, specifically the report from September 24th, is directly from Thought Exchange and the AI synthesis of the information in the surveys that were provided. The presentation that we're going to go through tonight highlights additional information that we've been asked to gather over time and share throughout the process. So, we're going to go through the slides, and I'm going to go really quickly through slide one through nine. These are an overview of why we are having this discussion. There's the, the additional, the changes to social studies that occurred within legislation. And then the addition of personal finance, which also occurred from legislation changes. Those changes and additions impact what we need to do for our graduation requirements. And really, we have two options that we're looking at. One is to increase our total required semester credits for graduation from 43 to 44. The other option would be to reduce our PE required semester credits to maintain the same number of total required semester credits at 43. So, there's a couple in these beginning slides of visuals that are also within our registration materials. And I'm going to turn it over to Principal Jenny, Assistant Principal Jenny Johnson, to talk about our current reality and then go over scheduling. Okay. Yes.
Okay. So, looking at just our current situation or our current status in terms of where Fayed sits at the high school as of today, there's been a lot of changes, I think, over the course of Fayed in the high school as a response to the changing students. course of Fayed in the high school as a response to the changing students' habits. It could be video games, it could be just a more sedentary lifestyle, or the need to provide more wellness experiences for students, I think, meeting the needs of the whole child. So it's beyond just traditional Fayed as maybe we grew up with, but our department has added emotional, social and emotional education as part of their department and their curriculum. Right now, there are ten courses that meet the needs of each and every student. There are thirty-four standards that the state of Minnesota requires a student to have to graduate from high school. Of those thirty-four, Personal Wellness is the name of the course. That's the prerequisite for any of the additional Fayed courses. Personal Wellness contains twenty-one of those thirty-four standards, and the other electives contain, each of them contain the remaining thirteen. So when a student takes two semesters worth or two requirements for Fayed, they're meeting the thirty-four credits that are required by the state. Another response, I think, to students and the community voice has been the desire for more flexible offerings for students for Fayed. So the department has added a summer blended health and summer blended Fayed options for students to take over the summer through the Edina Virtual Pathway. Students are also able to take a number of different Fayed courses, primarily students take Personal Wellness. And they also have that, as we talked about, the additional elective where they can achieve those other thirteen standards. Are, two of, two of the courses are offered through EVP, Strength and Conditioning and Blended Guided Wellness. So when you look at a student's schedule, and this would be current as of today, students have seven opportunities a semester to take a course, so they could earn fourteen total credits in a given year for a total of fifty-six. So we looked at some data that was presented back in the August twentieth board report and compiled the number of, the percentage of students who took only a world language course for four years, or only a music course for four years, the percentage of seniors that took both world language and music for four years, and then the percentage of students that took neither world language nor music in any of their time during their four years at Edina High School. And I think just to highlight a couple of those percentages, the number of students who did not take, or the percentage of students who did not, the percentage of seniors, I'm sorry, who did not take world language nor music at all during their four-year history, there was twenty-three percent, twenty-three point five, three percent on the average. And in the class of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-four point twenty-three percent of our students didn't take world language or music as their electives of choice. Also highlighting students who took both world language and music for four years, occupying those electives or earning those electives, class of twenty-twenty-four was at thirty-two point one four percent. On the average, over the previous six years, thirty-two point four nine percent. So I think this gives you a view or just the pattern that we're seeing over the last six years, the percentage of seniors that took world language and/or music as their elective of choice. And just kind of a written synopsis or some other information that we had gathered, and it's interesting, no students who took four years of world language also, there are no students who took four years of world language that also took four years of business electives. So in other words, if a, if a student took four years of world language, they did not fill the rest of their electives with four years of business classes. Most students only typically take, over the last six years, one business elective. Another interesting fact, one to two students a year take four years of world language and also take four years of computer science or engineering and technology. And then lastly, no students who took four years of world language took four years of fine arts. And that, fine arts would be the arts classes, not music. Okay. So kind of another summary, world language is an elective, and colleges require two to four years of world language, depending on the institution. So I think the point would be that just understanding that we have our requirements, and we have forty-three graduation requirements, there's fifty-six opportunities in all for students to take classes. And one thing I've noticed as the master scheduler is just the variety in options and how no two schedules seem to be exactly the same. And, and I, and I think that says a lot about what our school district stands for in terms of allowing students to be able to pursue what they want and how they want to do it. So just as some examples of what a student's schedule looks like, this is a student with summer personal wellness, this is a ninth grader, who took the summer personal wellness in the summer, and you can see what they have to do in their first semester of their freshman year is they have to take a quiet student prep because that summer personal wellness is logged into their ninth grade year. Students cannot exceed fourteen credits in a school year, so they have to take that quiet student prep during their first semester. This student also took a world language, and they also have a music class, and I think another thing to note is that they have a student prep also in second semester. The next example is a student who did not, a freshman student who did not take summer personal wellness, and they simply opted to take that personal wellness as a face-to-face class during the school day that meets every day. They also have a quiet student prep as an elective and chose American Sign Language as a world language. In second semester, they continued on with another opportunity for a student prep and added the Fine Arts Digital Photo One to their schedule and filled one of those Fine Arts required, credits. On the next slide, we have a senior who took online Personal Wellness one summer and Summer Health the next summer. And so they would have had to take those student preps, like I showed you in the first slide, as in their Semester One course. But this student's a senior, took two summer classes and allowed them some flexibility in terms of having a student prep during their freshman year, whatever year they took that. But this student has chosen to take a student prep and be a teacher assistant, so they are only taking five credit-bearing courses for their first semester, and then in their second semester chose to take six credit-bearing courses but still have that student prep. The next slide is a senior who didn't take any summer online or summer personal wellness courses, and this student filled most of their schedule with PSEO courses. And again, demonstrating just the flexibility, the options, the opportunities that students have by being students in our district. This student has quite a few AP classes, and then elected to take their second Fayed class all the way in the very last semester of their senior year to earn that credit and still had time to do it. And then the last schedule is a student who took both a world language and a music course for all four years of their time at Edina High School. And I think it's interesting, all of the courses in yellow are electives. There's only two requirements, graduation requirements left in this student's schedule by the time they're a senior, and that's the Intro to Literature CIS and the AP English Lit and Comp. The remaining courses are all electives at this point in the, the student's schedule. And then we also took a random sampling of twenty-four seniors just to kind of gauge what their schedules look like, and it seemed like of the twenty-four, two common groups emerged, one where students were looking for a, a quote, lighter schedule, maybe on the easier side. And so there were sixteen of the twenty-four opted for this lighter version where maybe they had a peer tutor or a TA position along with a student prep, so they were taking four to five classes, I'm sorry, five classes that were credit-bearing. Some had PSEO, two schedules had PSEO. And then there's a second group that took a heavier schedule, but only one of those students took seven classes in their senior year. Only one schedule had six classes. Again, these were more difficult classes, AP courses, world language, music, and six of the more heavier schedule had six classes along with their music and language. So I think in a nutshell, again, there are a wide variety of schedules that our students can take. And again, in my work as a schedule almost, there's no two that are identical, and I think that's such a bonus for students that come to Edina Public Schools. Over half of our students are graduating with fifty credits. A random sampling of the twenty-four students we talked about, sixteen students were taking kind of a lighter schedule, eight were taking a heavier schedule, and then thirty-three to thirty-four percent of our students are in a position to take four years of world language and music at the same time for all four years, and it still leaves four open slots for them to fill with electives that they want to explore in, in depth.
Thank you. A next section that we have was just to highlight some of the family feedback and student feedback that we gathered through Thought Exchange. And I'm going to highlight a couple of these slides specifically and then go through some others more quickly and leave some options for discussion on them further. The family feedback and the Thought Exchange was respondents, we had three hundred and eighty-nine respondents, so a lot, but we know it's also only a portion of our school community. We started the survey, the Thought Exchange survey, with a purpose statement of, the purpose statement that you saw in the earliest slides about what are the goals of our PE program, and just asked how was our PBE program doing and meeting those goals. Then we asked very specifically if we did drop an elective requirement, would we still meet the goals? And we have fifty-seven percent of the respondents say yes. And then we noted that it could, these are, it's really hard to predict, and I always want to continue to put that in space, that it could possibly decrease the flexibility of classes and would we still meet our goals? And we still had, that didn't drop much, right? We went from fifty-seven percent thinking we made our goals if we dropped one, and fifty-three percent thinking we still would if we lost some of the flexibility. That's a possibility. There's some statements here, just an overview, these come directly from Thought Exchange, and this was also directly in the report, so I'm going to go through these two slides, three slides more quickly and just highlight that the feedback was about as diverse as our students' schedules, noting that that is the strength in our system, that we provide so many choices and so much flexibility for our students and our families. That came through in both the student and the parent surveys. So what Thought Exchange did was just synthesize, we definitely had people within the survey that were very clear that reducing PE requirements was what their choice would be, and then some that wanted to maintain, but the common ground was the flexible options. And then when we look quickly at our PE, our, sorry, our student feedback, we had three hundred and seventy-seven respondents, nine through twelve, again, a high number, but not completely representative of our entire nine through twelve population. This was very targeted to, do you take some of these flexible options and why? So these data points just tell you from those three hundred and seventy-seven respondents, how many are taking the flexible options. And that data in our first board report in eight-twenty was specific to what Greg Guswire pulled based on what's in our system for all students. So then we just asked the students why, and there were themes about why. Convenience, we talked about, that for some students, they noted it was an easier option for them. Some noted that they don't like going to PE during the school day because you sweat, and then you have to go back to class, and all those inconveniences that they, they communicated. Many said very specifically to free up my schedule to take more electives and harder classes or student prep, which we know there's, you know, there's kind of some guidelines to follow with that, but there are many that did that for that reason. Many felt that it was a much more efficient way to get mandatory credits done, and some just preferred that that, that, well, actually, this activity preference was a really strong theme, that many felt like this met their needs when they're also in athletics or maybe even just yoga, right? That they're, that they're active themselves, and so then they can be efficient with what they like to do in their life and what they're doing with a lot of their hours and use that for some of their PE time. So again, there was differences and a wide variety. A lot of students did note, I want to emphasize this, that it was to free up their schedule, and, and a lot noted that it was to avoid in-school gym. But the common with all of them was the flexibility and convenience, and those, those slides are coming right from Thought Exchange. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Patel just to speak a little bit about our ending slides.
Thank you. So considering all the information that we gathered, we wanted to really address three main themes that we were hearing. One was, the first was being aware of the flexibility occurs currently in our schedules. So looking at the random schedules that we pulled, we found that most schedules have at least two spots for either a non-credit-bearing course or a totally choice elective, meaning that it does not contribute to a graduation requirement, but it's simply an elective. The Edina Virtual Pathway option does provide some flexibility in terms of how you disperse the credits. Just a reminder that, that we have a maximum of fourteen credits per year, so it doesn't allow you to necessarily take more courses, but it does distribute the courses throughout the course of the year and does free up some space for things like personal prep. The, you want to get that? Thank you. The, also, we have opportunities outside of Edina High School to earn credit for learning, such as, you know, post-secondary options, alternative learning sites, and out-of-school experiences, work-based learning, and other education opportunities. And then finally, elective credit-bearing activities, for example, Student Council and Yearbook and our, our school newspaper as well. You can earn credits for those as well. Secondly, we wanted to look at, if we did look at the PE reduction and what would be the impact of that, and the theme emerged of less flexibility. The, the survey suggested that fifty-six percent of the students, if they did not have to take a second Fayed as a graduation requirement, they would choose not to take that second PE course. So with the fifty-six percent reduction in personal wellness, that would leave about half the options for our, our elective Fayed courses. It would have impact on a number of those courses, and of particular note, we predict that we would have a strong impact on our unified physical education offerings. And then finally, we wanted to look at, what are some opportunities that emerge through our surveys and the, looking at the data that we had? There was a, a suggestion that maybe enhancing the communication on what flexible options do exist during our registration process would be helpful for, for students as they registered, and to explore options of what other districts are doing in order to provide alternatives for gaining credits for graduation and also embedding the, the standards from physical education into their courses. To look at expanding the summer options, again, that would not free spaces up for additional credits, but would free up the spaces in the schedule to have a different experience. Also, looking at increased wellness and mental health education throughout a student's day, be placing that in other parts of their schedule and to look at opportunities such as advisory. There was a theme that emerged that talked about exploring additional options for recognizing athletics as part of the requirement for a physical education credit. We currently do have that on an online version where you can fill out the logs, that you have the experience from athletics that would contribute to that. And then looking at the flexibility as we look at offerings in other content areas and how we can maybe merge some of the, the standards into other courses, and then ensuring that there's increased flexibility in new course proposals to make sure some of the standards are embedded in new course proposals. So those were options that we looked at. I'll pass this back to Jody.
Thank you. I think just to highlight the slides that I went through very quickly in the beginning, this, you know, incredibly challenging conversation, and it's coming because we had some changes in legislation that were outside of our control. And so as we engage in the conversation, we are definitely here to hear feedback and input and recognize that with the changes in legislation, that it, it does make it difficult and that through
And that through the gathering of information and providing more input for you, we, we have learned some very, very valuable things that can lean us into the continuous improvement that we've been talking about through the whole evening. And we're, we're open to hear what, what we should continue to lean into for next steps.
Thank you very much, Director D. St. Hubert. And before we move on with this agenda item, Board Policy 203 does state that we cannot have a board meeting that extends beyond 10 o'clock without the approval of the rest of the board. So I would like to make a motion that we extend our board meeting to 11 o'clock. Is there a second from a board member?
Reluctantly, yes.
All those in favor of extending our board meeting to 11 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and our board meeting can go up to 11 o'clock. It might not though. Now we can move on with this agenda item. First, I'd open it up to board members that might have any additional questions about this topic to make sure that there's no more clarifications board members need before we move into any reactions that you might have. Director Bergman?
A quick question. Can't exceed 14 credits in a year? Is that a EHS policy or is there an actual regulatory policy that doesn't allow us to do that?
There is actually a regulatory policy. I don't know if it's policy, but budgetary.
Okay.
Mark, oh, do you want detail?
No, 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 that's, that's all I need. I just wanted to confirm that. And then second, what's, one, one piece of data that's not here, if you know it off the top of your head, great. When we look at, what are the average amount of credits that students are graduating with in the categories that you had on, you know, your slide with world language and music breakout? So you had world language only, music only, both language and music, and then neither. Do you have any sense as to, for the kids that are both world language and music, are they taking the full 56 credits or are they slightly less than that on average? Versus neither world and language, they're at their, I don't know, maybe they're 48 or 50 or whatever it might be. Do you have like a, any sense about, because I'm just trying to get the percentages that you brilliantly put here. I'm just trying to get a sense of how many credits is the average graduate having based on these categories?
I think at some point, I can't remember which slide, but I read that the average was over 50 that students graduate with. I don't have the specific data that you're asking for. Anecdotally, that of the 24 senior schedules that we pulled and the ones that we just showed, I think there are quite a few students who would take six per semester. So that would be 48, roughly 48 to 50 that students end up graduating with.
Okay, well, when we bring this to action, if you wouldn't mind, I think that would be helpful for me just so I can frame what that is, if that's possible, great. If not, it's okay. My last question, we talked about the 13 standards that are required outside of the core personal wellness. If I remember correctly from our work session, those cannot be combined with any other course at this moment outside of the ones that are already, the 10 identified or whatever it might be. It's not like we can take those 13 standards and put them in a personal finance class and kill two birds with one stone. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
Well, for, I definitely at the board discussion, we talked about that first personal finance standards can't be embedded.
Right.
Those 13 standards could be embedded in the one PE class and potentially looked at to be embedded in other classes. My initial reaction is that might be a stretch, but could definitely be explored.
Just so you know, my questions are not specifically because I'm advocating for that.
Yes.
I'm actually responding to questions I received.
That's great.
From people, especially at the PTO at the high school.
Yes. Would you have anything else to say to that? No. And Director Bergman, I did like one point to your first question, and that's pretty tiny, but like when we look at the percentage of students that are taking four world, four years of world language, four years of music, and then all math, a science and a social studies, all four years, they don't, they have room for four more classes, right? So it's not a lot, but we can try to pull that exact percentage that you were asking for too.
It's, it's more of wanting to get the, the difference between the kids who are full on in the four-year of the two key programs and so on and so forth. They only have this four elective options.
Yep.
What are they, what are they doing with their total, are they going for the full 56? Versus the rest of the cohort of students that are somewhere less than that, is there a significant difference in the total amount of credits?
Okay.
Because if you're talking about one extra requirement of 43 to 44 in that regard,
Yep.
clearly that's going to impact that first group the most. I'm trying to get a little, kind of a weighing difference between that group versus everybody else from that standpoint in my consideration of where to go with this. Great, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Questions from other board members? So I would just ask board members to weigh in on any thoughts that they have to make sure that the community is able to hear feedback from board members since this is the first opportunity, it's televised and recorded as well as, so our administration can hear feedback from board members. Director Arum?
My initial thought is that, you know, having had three kids who've gone through this piece of it, I think the flexibility is great when it comes to that. I think that my biggest concern has to do with kind of where we're going with some of the pathways work and some of those types of things and allowing those types of activities and adding an increased requirement. So that's where I kind of say like, you know, we, I get where we're saying we need to maintain flexibility from that standpoint and I, and I love this summer online pieces of it because I think that does add flexibility. I just am concerned with having an additional requirement for, that might impact either pathways or other types of things, whether it's PSEO or DECA or those types of things that students are typically involved into.
Director Gabor?
Thank you for this report because this is the third time the board's getting to see it and you continue to put information in there to, I think, help, help us make the best decision we can. And as you indicated, this is a discussion we are having because the state made some decisions. They also made some decisions about social studies, which we made a decision about in the spring. And I've asked myself, if I would have known where we were going at that point, would I have made a better, bigger, different decision at that point? And I don't know. And so that's where my question goes with where Director Arum had talked about is, is better understanding, how do we, you know, we've talked about pathways, but we've also talked about making those pathways embedded in classes that we are already offering. And so that's a big question mark for me is like, are we going to eventually have to do something with this credit anyway? And I don't know because I don't think we have enough of that information at this point. All of your data to me is, is helpful because I think it tells a story. I think all of us have had kids go through the system and so we know our own children's experience. And we know our children's friends' experience. But I think Jenny, how you pulled so many different schedules, that's really important for me to hear because I don't, I represent all 8,500 students that go through our schools and I don't know, I don't know them all. And so that to me, I, I'm trying to, and knowing that, like you started with your, the presentation, you know, wellness and, and how many times we hear the stress load of our students. And that could be taken a different way too. We could say this frees them up to maybe, you know, lessen the stress. But that's weighing heavy on me because I know that those are courses. You know, I've heard people say, well, well, kids don't want to take it. Well, kids don't want to take math sometimes either and we make them take math. So, yeah, so, so I just, I wanted to articulate, I guess, I talked a lot at the last meeting about kind of that runway and understanding where we're going. But I know my fellow board members to take this really seriously and we were trying to do what's best for students. And, and so thank you again for your report and the work that you've done.
Director Mann?
Last board meeting or work, work session, not tonight, but a couple of weeks ago, we had a really robust discussion that kind of boiled down to the differences. We had, it was kind of two discussions really about kind of the state requirements versus kind of end up to be the requirements of an Edina student trying to have really a highly competitive college enrollment situation. And the two very different conversations ultimately, both very valuable conversations, but kind of different. The state really kind of made, put us in a situation where they added, we had a packed bus and they added a course to a packed bus, but yet didn't tell us what we should take off that bus. And so we're kind of looking to see, you know, try to fit that in. For me, the teacher recommendation to add the course also, I think I lean that way in the sense that cutting the physical education requirement, I think would do real harm to the unified program. And, and that's something that can, I think, change kids' worldview as far as we're talking about having a a wide-ranging, really full education for our kiddos. And that seems like just such a valuable program for us as well. We can always look back a year later and say, well, maybe we can make an adjustment rather than cutting and then going back and saying, oh, well now we can't really add it back. I don't favor adding, you know, PE credit for sports participation. I understand we can kind of do that right now as an online situation, so you can kind of do that if you want. But I guess I, from the information we've had, I, I guess at this point I would support adding the, adding the one course and keeping our PE requirements as they are.
Before we move on to somebody else, I would like to have a dialogue specifically about unified programming. And I appreciate you bringing it up because I was going to bring it up. I think we need to be very careful when presenting information to our community about unified programming and the risk of a decision the board is making having a negative impact on unified programming. I've gotten a lot of very panicked calls from special education parents about that. And at this point in time, we do not have any information that says a decision that we're going to make tonight is going to impact unified programming. And I'm really, I guess, concerned about the way it's been presented that there is a direct, a likely direct correlation between reducing this credit and our unified programming. I think that as an institution, as a district, as a high school, I hope that we have a commitment to unified programming and that we find a way to make unified programming work. And in fact, everything I've heard is that we're working to expand it into other areas beyond PE. And I would like to assure our special education families that we do have that commitment regardless of what happens with this decision. Because I think when we do make a commitment, we need to follow through on that. And I think that, I actually interpreted the data differently as far as what would be impacted from, if, if we reduce this credit, which I'm not saying that we do, the student survey that we did, the 78%, 78% of the students that responded to the student survey said they're already currently taking physical education through a virtual format. It was close to 80%, which to your point, doesn't represent all students. But that was the survey that we did. So of that survey, we have a large, large percentage of our students not utilizing in-class physical education and they're taking it through a virtual format. Of those students that said that they would not take a PE class, a second one, because if the credit was reduced, 80% of those students said it was because they're interested in taking other electives. And so I've just been going through all of this data in my head. And I think the real risk in this decision is to our virtual programming because we have so many students that are trying to take physical education and get their two credits. I think we have a real risk of having a dramatic drop in virtual programming. But I guess my point is, we don't know. And since we don't know, I think we can't be cavalier about sending out to our most vulnerable parents that a program they depend on could be at risk. And that's really concerning to me. And I just had to highlight that before we move on, so.
Guys for clarification? So do you think in the presentation we got, that when they said unified PE would be difficult to offer, do you question that info? Or do you, do you think that's incorrect that we, what we got from our people?
I don't know if it is or not. I think the reality is, we don't necessarily know the impact. I think we can guess that the data is telling us that we're going to have fewer students signing up for PE. I think we know that for a fact. The data here says 65% fewer students will probably take a second PE class. Where that, where that falls, we don't know. So my presumption, my guess is it might be a lot of online students, but I don't know that. It might, it might negatively impact unified. I don't know that. And I guess my point is, if we see that there is an unintended negative consequence to a decision, which the board hasn't even made yet, but if we see that, I think that, that is where you do continuous improvement process and you say, there was an unintended negative consequence that we have to deal with. But I, I think, I think it's, I think we can't scare people into making a decision. And I felt that pointing out that we could have a unified program at risk because of this decision, I felt was trying to scare our special education parents when we have no data to say there's a direct correlation between this decision and a reduction in our unified classes.
So Erica, I hear you. I really do. And I, I understand where you're coming from. I also see the flip side, that if they don't give that information to the board and people make a decision and that's the, then that is the consequence that happens, our inboxes are going to be filled with all sorts of, so I think it's, it's important for them. And maybe we can talk about, could it be worded a little different? And, and I hear 100% what you're saying. I, I really, really do. I just think that it would be them not doing their due diligence if they didn't say, hey, from our standpoint, these are some of the things that we think will happen. So I want to give them a little bit of slack here too, to just be like, it might not be a black or white issue. It might be like, eh, we could have maybe worded that a little different. But that could be an intended, an unintended consequence if we reduce that credit.
If I could, if I could add to that. I believe that in the conversations I've had, the understanding around that is you need so many students to run unified. And whether it's 65% dropped here or 30% dropped there, it would be a reduction in the number of kids. And so when that data was brought toward me, I did believe that it was important to at least share that information because you, you have to have so many students to run that. Valid point. Intent, intent was never to scare board members or community members into forcing a decision. Clearly impact though, is that the perception is that, that was there. And just for clarity, that was never my intent to have that. It was, as Karen said, just really to make certain that the board has as much information as it can in order to make a complex decision.
And I appreciate that and I don't necessarily think the information shouldn't exist. I think we need to be very careful about how we articulate concerns, especially to our most vulnerable families. And I think that the way it was taken to some of our special education families was they didn't even understand what the decision was. I got phone calls saying, I heard the board is getting rid of unified physical education at the high school. And I think that's the risk sometimes when things aren't framed very, very carefully, especially with some of these issues. And so I just wanted to make sure, after your point Elliot, which is a very valid point and a very valid concern, that I want to make sure that the community also understands that this is a risk or that we need to be cognizant of. But it's, I don't think we have enough information right now to necessarily say, and maybe you, and maybe you do, that we will for sure and maybe you do, that we will for sure, this decision that we're making will for sure equal this.
I was just going by the information that was presented. If you're reducing courses, you're going to eventually reduce numbers. And I think a negative impact to the unified PE program would be something, I guess, at this point, I don't think we necessarily would need to take that. And I'm, I'm glad you guys brought that forward, because I think those are really the things we need to know, is those unintended consequences of this could happen, of, you know, the deck of cards, if you move this card, this could fall. So yeah, what I said was, fine with it.
Can I, can I make a clarification? The online, the 70% of students that are taking online fayed is primarily the personal wellness course. So that's the first class of the two. And then our data showed that 56% of the students indicated they would not take the second course.
Thank you for that clarification. And I do want to say Chair Ellenberg, thank you for bringing up the concern about intent. I appreciate Dr. Stanley phrasing that in terms of providing the information, but being conscious and aware of the intent. And we, we value unified programming, programming deeply in our district, and I do want our community to know that. So, thank you.
Director Bergman?
Well, I, I think what's really important, we talked about this at the work session, is that we again are put in a position where we have to make a terrible choice. There's not a good answer to this question, but we only have two choices we can make, one or the other. That's what we have. So there's going to be consequences no matter which way we go. I think that's really important to remind ourselves all that that's what we're looking at. And it's really up to the seven people up here who were elected by the representative, or the community, we have to make this decision. You guys have given us the information, I think I said at the last work session, you gave us every piece of information we could possibly have, it was a wonderful presentation, it's very thorough. It's now we gotta bite the bullet one way or the other. And there's going to be consequences, one way or the other. And so that's what the call is going to be. And whatever happens from there, I have the faith and trust that every administrator, every person who's working on this was going to do the best to minimize the negative consequences. But for some students, one way or another, there will be. You can't get away from that. So my challenge is, when I was asking about the 13 standards, I'm trying to think ahead of, whatever the decision is, what future things can we work on to figure out, is there a way for us to slice and dice this in a future way that could have captured those other 13 things, because they're still valuable? But kids aren't going to want to choose to take that. How do we incorporate them into something they have to take? That's where I was going with that. And the only other comment I'd make for at least tonight, is like, as I said, the work session, the only thing I would ask us to, again, my colleagues on the board, we have talked about as part of our strategic plan, social emotional wellness of our students. It's not PE the way it was before, as Jenny said earlier in her presentation. It's not the same thing. It's more wellness is what we're talking about. And it comes in a lot of different frames, a lot of different ways that wellness can be done. And in order to give flexibility, I want to have that too, because I, I appreciate what you said Erica, when you said, wow, this report says that how much more flexibility students want by not having one course. Loud and clear. I didn't get that at the beginning of the work session last week, but I get it now. I'm balancing the notion of, okay, well that's great, I want to provide that, but we still have social emotional wellness that we need to have done, and taking one more credit away from working on that unless we're incorporating that elsewhere. That's where I'm struggling to go, where do we go with this? Because it doesn't really matter which decision we're going to make, 43, 44, because that's what we're talking about. It's going to impact a portion of the population. And people are just going to have to come up with, well, what's their best feel for that? And if you're concerned about the impact to one group versus another group, that's great, that's what you're supposed to do. But in, in the end, you're not going to be able to solve it for everybody. So I just wanted to say, thanks to the state legislature, this is where we are.
Director Berry?
I agree with lots of things that have been said tonight. I really appreciated the slides that you added to the presentation showing the music and the language. I have not had a kid go through the college application experience yet, so right now we're dealing with the perception of what do you need to take in high school to prepare yourself for college, which I think a lot of students are. And the numbers on those slides told a little different story than the, you need four years of a language, you need four years of a music, you need to stick with those things to show, you know, whatever to, to the colleges. So that gave me something to reflect on. And also, I just was curious, at what point in high school do students start to meet with someone who actually knows what they need to take to get into college? Unless they unnecessarily stress themselves out freshman year thinking this is what we need to take, when maybe the reality is a little different.
Is it not, you want to respond? Our counselors actually do start meeting with freshmen with respect to their four-year plan. And so I think a statute says we have to have a four-year plan, and we do. So every student has a current look of what they're going to take the year they're in, and they also have a picture, a snapshot of the rest of the courses that they need to take until they graduate. Now, are we talking necessarily about, you gotta take this your senior year, their freshman year? No, not necessarily. But I think we do want kids and families to be educated about what that pathway looks like throughout their four years.
Thank you. And then my other comment would be just knowing that in the next coming meetings, we're going to be talking in more depth about the pathways program that's coming and the decision we're making for the high school at this point is not necessarily the decision that we might make with more information down the road. That's the other thing that I'm just kind of grappling with right now.
Director Berry too. I did talk to our counselors, just to get a better understanding myself of the language as a parent of a recent graduate and a, and a senior, it's, you know, always been a question. One of our counselors said that more language is always more, but less isn't necessarily less. And it's, it's different for every institution, not every, right? But there are differences amongst all of our institutions. And so that touch point with the counselors in ninth grade is really, really important. And the continued touch point with the counselor as our kids change and grow, right? And it's, it is, there is not a cut and dry number of years, but that minimum recommendation of two is absolutely there. And more is more, depending on the school and what you're trying to accomplish with your future, so, yeah.
Director Huvi?
So I think it's more than just a college requirement, because we do have two language programs in our district. So we need to keep that in mind as well. My daughter actually took French and Spanish in high school. And then dropped French later because it was difficult to work some things around. There were other things going on too, but, so I just wanted to make that point, that we do have two language programs. It's not just about college requirements. And I pretty much took the online wellness course because I had to support my son in that course. And, you know, I don't know, online, PE, online. Wellness, I think, was fine, but online PE is not really, I think, what we're looking for. Unless you're in a sport, and then I can see the benefit there, because it does free up your time. So that's where I'm also thinking, like, and I understand that not all these courses are available online, but that would also be something I would want to caution against, that it may not be all above board, based on my personal experience with my own children.
Thank you, Director Huvi.
Can I just make one more comment, please? One thing we didn't think about, just thinking outside the box, why didn't we have the debate team debate this issue and have for and against, one of the options, present that to the board, and then go from there? Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bergman. If you haven't noticed, I'm really struggling with this topic.
I think we all are.
I know, I know. Yeah. I think, I think one of the things I'm struggling with is that it's become, I feel like it's starting, it has become an issue of the value of physical education and the value of wellness. And I don't think that there's anyone on the board, or I myself, I actually wish there was more physical activity at all secondary levels, because I think our students desperately need it. I think that they need more movement during the day. I think that's better for their brains and their mental health. Unfortunately, we don't live in the ideal world, so, but I, I guess, I mean, you've put it very well, you, I mean, we have two options. And I'm struggling with the notion of choice and flexibility and leaning into, really, from my perspective, I was rereading our mission and vision and our portrait of a well-rounded graduate today, and because of this topic. And if we look at the first part of our well-rounded graduate, it's academically prepared students demonstrate strong foundational knowledge across a wide range of subjects, including reading, English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, Technology, Engineering, the arts and mathematics. They not only master these areas, but also apply their learning to standards aligned with challenging and rich curricula. And I'm just really struggling with, I want to give the kids as much flexibility as possible to discover their possibilities and thrive. And that is what I think is one of the biggest strengths of Edina High School, is the rich curricula we have, the amazing extracurriculars we have, and the fact that our kids can take, if they're interested in engineering, or robotics, or ceramics, or I want to try, I don't know, aerobics, or whatever. I love that. And I'm struggling with that. And even though it's one half a credit, it is a limiter. And with the benefit of physical education, which I absolutely value, and I think that it's important, and trying to view it through those lens, and then the lens of how do you make the best decision for all students? Because this is about each and every student. I quite frankly, don't know what the right thing to do is. I, I just don't. I, I don't know either decision, I think, I just, I don't know. I wish someone could tell me. Like, this is the, this is the best, this is why we get paid the big bucks. So I don't know the right decision, I don't know what my decision is. I, I just, I just wanted to let you know, sort of, the lens that I'm viewing this decision through is what, what is, what does flexibility mean? And what, what do, what does our, how do we view graduation credits through our mission and vision? How do we live that? And then how does this decision impact that? And I don't know the answer, but I guess I don't have much more to articulate right now.
Can I just ask one operational question? If we made a decision, whichever way it is, and a couple of years later we realize, wow, that was a terrible decision, because we now have evidence and whatever's happened, we can change it, can't we?
But I think we want to be careful, so we're not, I mean, you, I know that.
I know, but what I'm saying, and the only reason I bring it up, is because when we're stuck on, we don't know which way to go, we sometimes can build ourselves up into thinking, this is, this is a critical moment and it can't change once we make it. What I think about continuing improvement process is that if a board makes a bad decision, which we can do, not knowing at the time it's a bad decision, because our intentions are good, we then have the power, if necessary, to change it, even though that's painful. It would be more painful to continue down a path of a bad decision with evidence that tells us that's the case. So I just want to clarify that whatever decision we make, it's not the end-all, be-all, because we could change if evidence proved that we were wrong, whatever way we decided to go. That's all I wanted to say.
I think we can, I think it's easier to build something back. I think it's really, I think it'd be hard to, if it was removed a PE credit, to build it back in. I, I just think from a, you're dealing with staff, staffing, I, I think it would be a lot easier, it's a lot easier to remove something than make a decision to put it back in. But I, I hear, I absolutely hear what you're saying and agree with it. Uh, Director Mann?
That was part of the point I brought up earlier, is that if we add the credit, we keep the PE credits as is, and in a year or two we realize we don't have the flexibility we want for our kids, it'd be easier then to go back and change that, rather than cut it and go, oh, we did lose the unified program, or it got to a point where now it's not sustainable. And then trying to rebuild that would be, I think, a lot more difficult that way, whereas we could do it this way, not to kick the can down the road, but then to look at it, review it and go, okay, there's still some fine tuning we could make, rather than having to cut and trying to build back, I think was.
Absolutely. And I think it's just important, as we were talking about intent earlier, we're not intending to use ninth and 10th graders as guinea pigs so we can figure this out. We're trying to do the best we can with imperfect information, given that we're, this is not a choice we wanted to make, we're being forced to make, and now we have to pick whatever is going to be there. So I, I think I would love to hear, when we eventually get to action on this in, in the future, that that whole point that you two just made, okay, well, if we're thinking about what, which is easier to, if it's not the right thing, which way is, that might sway my decision. Because I'm, like you, I'm not sure which is the right way to go, because I don't think there is a right way. There just is a way. We just got to figure it out.
Anything else from board members? Thank you for the discussion, thank you for being here so late, sorry. I appreciate it. That's all. And I think you're done, Director? Oh no, you have policies now. Sorry. We're going to move on to our policy review. Director Gabler?
All right, thank you. All right, you guys, we're going to work through this as quick as possible, and our administrators have been working tirelessly to get these to you and in perfect shape. So we're going to start with Director Saylor. She's going to come and talk to us about alcohol and drugs, and how we're.
Our, our policy, our alcohol and drug policy.
Weren't you the one who said about how you frame something, phrase it, and so on and so forth?
That was not me, that was Chair Ellenberg. So she's going to talk to us about alcohol and drug-free workplace and school environment.
Thank you, Chair Ellenberg, Director Gabler, Dr. Stanley, and members of the board. So board policy for 18, alcohol and drug-free workplace and school environment is before you tonight for discussion. Really, there are very few proposed changes within this policy, and with the exception of style, they largely stem from some recent changes that happened at the legislature in the 2024, this year's session, around the, around the patient registry program, and specifically that employers and educational organizations cannot discriminate against students or employees that are enrolled in the medical cannabis program. And so that is, that was the largest change within, within 418. And you can see that reflected in Section 4, Paragraph D. In addition to that, we had some very excellent conversation during our board policy committee meeting, specifically around the procedures and when members of the public are or are not permitted to possess controlled substances, intoxicating cannabinoids, or edible cannabinoid products within a school district, and whether or not the superintendent can grant them permission to do so. And I wanted to, so the board policy committee came to the conclusion that the proposal should not include the ability to provide consent to carry medical cannabis, excuse me, specifically or intoxicating cannabinoids. excuse me, specifically or intoxicating cannabinoids or edible cannabinoids because the policy very specifically prevents that for all other, um, employees, students, and guests on, on school district property or locations. And it seemed to be a, um, it seemed to be conflict with other parts of the policy, which I propose it continues to do so. I did want to say, because I did a little more research into that, I told the committee that I would, and actually reached directly out to Dr. Terry Morrow at the Minnesota School Boards Association, was still waiting to hear back from him, and that, that conflict comes from the differences between the federal law and the state law when it comes to marijuana products. And, um, but more specifically, we still, through board policy, prohibit those products on school district property at all times. And so, the proposal remains that we continue in that way. With that information, does anyone have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Director Saylor. And this will move forward for action in our November meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. On deck, uh, is Assistant Superintendent Nate Swenson. And Nate, should we just go down the list of what you, let's start with 507.
If you would be willing, yeah.
Corporal punishment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering with your, your permission, Director Gabler, if we could talk about 507 and 507.5.
Together.
Together.
Permission granted.
Seems to ma-, okay, thank you. It seems to make sense. Well, thank you again. So, policy 507, uh, and 507.5 are interconnected. 507.5 is a brand-new policy, and it was recommended by MSBA for all districts that have SROs, and we have SROs. In preparation and reviewing these policies, I, um, got feedback from principals and Alex Hatstrom, our Emergency Management Safety Coordinator. And for 507.5 specifically because it involved SROs, I solicited feedback from EPD as well. What you'll notice about 507 is it just really delineates the difference between school employees and SROs, and it adds prone restraint into corporal, corporal punishment. And then with 507.5, I'm sorry, in 507, it excludes SROs from that policy. And then in 507.5, that's where it defines the role of an SRO. Um, and so, those are, those are the, kind of the big differences. You all are well aware of some of the challenges and that have arisen regarding prone restraint, and so that's why it's been added to, um, this policy. And then in 507.5, there's also specific training requirements for our SROs, and I've been, um, told by EPD that, um, not only do our SROs receive that training, um, but there are plans, once the department takes up the training, um, for our SROs to receive it along the timelines that are in the policy. So, with that, what questions do you have about 507 and 507.5?
Director Barry?
Do the changes or the new policy affect the ability of our SROs to do their job in any way?
No.
Chair Ellenberg?
Um, I have a question about 507.5. The policy explicitly states that, um, school is defined as basically our sites. And I was wondering, what about, um, like our football field? And if there's something in progress in, um, someplace beyond a building specifically? We've been very explicit in that definition. But I assume that our school resource officers could potentially have a situation involving students. And I'm speaking really specifically about our, our football field, our tennis courts. And I don't know if that is included in the definition of a school site. If it's not, I would like to see a more expansive definition. So, that's clarified.
Yeah. If, if I could draw your attention to contractual duties under Roman numeral four, I think number two alludes to their obligation to protect student, staff, and visitors on school grounds from criminal activity. So, I, I think that that would, that that would cover it.
And we,
but I would be, go ahead.
We talked about this in the committee, and I remember Alex had an answer. Do you remember, Dr. Stanley, how he answered it?
Um, we did refer to the protecting student, staff, and visitors on school grounds from criminal activity. And the SROs are hired for the school day. They're not hired, we have to contract with the police department. So, we're not even guaranteed to always have our SROs, but we do contract with the police department to have them, and that is why that is not embedded into this policy.
That was, that was one of my wonder, that was one thing I was wondering and one thing I was still confused about was, so, let's just say the Creek Valley Tennis Courts. If something happens during the school day, is that considered part of the Creek Valley school site?
Yes.
The grounds, the district grounds.
Or is that school grounds?
The grounds.
It's grounds, and that's why, uh, we do believe that that's covered by, um, for A2.
And so, I, I'm just wondering, if policy can do what they want, I'm wondering if it would be hel-, it would be helpful for me, but, but it would be helpful maybe in the definition to define what school grounds are. Because as soon as I read a specific definition of school, it begged the question to me of, even though we stay below in our contractual duties, that the officers can work on school grounds. I was like, why are we defining school, but then they can work on grounds, but it's not defined above? So, it was just a question I had, and you guys can do whatever you want with that feedback. So.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
About this, uh, the substitute officers. Is that the context that you're talking about where there is, um, you know, where we have to co- contract outside of them, uh, outside of the regular school days? Or is this like truly substitute officers in the school day?
Truly substitute officers.
So, not supplemental ones for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, correct.
Any other questions on these two? Great. Then these will move forward for the November board meeting for action. And I appreciate your partnership on so many levels, on having Alex on this and EPD, and, um, this has gotten a lot of press, and so it's nice to do it right. So, thank you.
Would you like me to continue with 512?
Yes, let's go with 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities, which is also a brand-new policy.
Yeah, this is, this one was a little bit tricky. I think it's important just to provide a little bit of context about it. So, the policy that we had in place, um, for whatever reason, um, it just, it hadn't been revised since 2014. And, um, and the, this year legislative changes, specifically the New Voices legislation, was passed that, um, for lack of better words, uh, gave a lot more protections to students and the media advisor. And, um, so, I, um, Daphne, Trevor Helmers, that you all know, and Dan Amborn, collaborated around this policy. And we actually began with our current policy and then the MSBA redline, um, version. And what ended up happening is that there was a lot of confusion between our policy and the redline version because, um, of some vagueness involved in the policy. And Trevor, bless his heart, uh, offered the, what I thought was a cleaner version of policy 512 that his firm, um, created. And so, he offered that to us, and I shared that with Dan Amborn. And the great part about it is it cleared up a lot of the issues that you would find in the New Voices legislation. It cleared that, those up in the new policy. So, we actually pivoted to the policy that Trevor provided, um, to us, which is, which is before you. And I, I think the big thing about policy 512 now is that it really protects students and the media advisor and their First Amendment rights. An example that I would give you, UC Prior Restraint, um, it's really clear, like that is a big no-no. And I think you could probably put in there, uh, prior review even, um, those are really frowned upon now, um, with the new legislation. So, um, that's a little bit about 512 and how we landed on this particular version of the policy.
And, um, Assistant Superintendent Swenson, what was the website that you sent us to at policy? Student Press Law Center?
It, it's, uh, yeah, if you want, it's splc.org.
Yep. That, board members, if you're kind of wondering a little bit of clarity, that really cleared things up as far as what this law says. And if you're a subscriber to the Zephrus, which is free, the editorial is all about, from the editorial board in this last episode, is about, um, our new voices defend democracy. So, it's all about them talking about the new law and, um, yeah, it was, it was interesting. So, thanks for your work on this.
Yeah.
Are there questions from board members? All right. First Amendment it is.
Thank you very much.
And then we have, uh, Director Remzin coming to talk to us about, um, Jody, do you want to start with 508, extended school year?
Yeah, so, um, policy 508, there were no substantive changes that were brought before the, um, policy committee. It really is a policy that mirrors the Minnesota statute regarding extended school year services. And, um, so there were no, no suggested changes.
Any questions on 508? All right, great. That will move forward in November. And then, would you like to talk to us about 516.5 overdose medication?
Yes, I'd like to also invite Shawnee Kruger to come up, um, just in case there's any questions afterwards. So, this was a, a policy that was, um, a lot of great discussion came, came during policy committee. So, some of the questions that came up was whether or not students, um, who were to use opioid overdose medication would have any, I think would be covered under the Good Samaritan law. And what we learned is that age is not a restriction for Good Samaritan law, and should a student use it upon, um, one of their friends, um, there wouldn't be a restriction in that place. Another piece that we looked at, um, was around discipline and naloxone. And what we found in that situation is that, um, while use of naloxone by a student is not covered specifically as an exception to our student care policy, which would require that we would have a medical provider signed off by the school nurse and the parent for it to be used, that our administrators would have discretion on, on using the discipline policy for that purpose. And then the other area that we really talked about, um, was the model policy plan, that this original policy was modeled after one year ago, shortly after legislation went into effect. And, um, some talk that we looked at was whether or not these policy committees, um, around the use of the naloxone reporting to the board, if those are required statutorily, or if that was just something that was encouraged by the MSBA model policy. We utilized, the attorney represents the district in these matters, who advised that these were just, um, recommendations brought before, that there were no requirements for those provisions. And so, with that, what you'll see is within our, our policy, the majority of substantive changes take place in, um, Section 3C and D regarding, um, the planning team requirements and the site planning teams.
Great, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions about this policy? Great, and thank you, Shawnee, for staying around so late.
Thank you for staying. I'm so sorry you stayed this late for that.
All right. Board members, we will move this, uh, 516 and .5 forward to November. Thank you for sticking with us through this.
Uh, thank you, Director Gabler and Policy Committee. And we're going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 board priorities?
So moved. Second.
Uh, Director Gabler, do you want to give a quick overview of why we, what this, so the community has an idea of what we're voting on?
Sure. So, every year, the board, um, similar to what you've seen tonight, uh, with a lot of our departments setting goals, we also, uh, set priorities for ourself. And so, uh, we have, what you see before you tonight is many months in the making. Uh, we started at our board retreat in, in August, and you'll see two types of priorities. Our first one is around our, um, our number one goal as a board, which is really centers around governance. And so, to learn a little bit more about that, you can read that part. And then our board priority two gets into some of the more specific items that the board was interested in, um, making sure that is front and center in our work this year. So, um, there's been a lot of collaborative work on this, and, um, so that's what's up for action tonight.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments? All of those in favor of approving the 2024, 2025 school board priorities, say aye. Anyone opposed? The school board priorities have been approved. Do I have a motion to approve the additional District Professional Development Day for the 2024, 2025 school calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, Director T. St. Hubert? Your star tonight.
Thank you. So, our additional PD day for this school year, um, is recommended to be on May 9th. We gathered this recommend, recommended day after feedback from stakeholders, or both family stakeholders as well as staff stakeholders. And it's a priority day, and we learned so many things about the good things happening in our district this year and, or this evening, I should say. And all of that work takes professional development. And so, I appreciate the support in this and the recommended May 9th day. And are there any questions or feedback?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Director T. St. Hubert, but the reason we have this additional PD day is directly related to the REDACT and the additional time for, um, training our teachers on those topics.
Yes, so our three PD days that are currently on the calendar this year, um, are covering our REDACT requirements that we're aware of right now in Phase One. As soon as we know our Phase Two, we will try to be putting those in. Um, and because of that, we, we need an additional day because of all the other things going on in the district. So, with our new literacy curriculums, with our SEL work, um, with our STEAM, um, it's really critical that we have a spring day to lean into the professional development around those areas where the REDACT is taking, the, the priority of the REDACT is critical, but is taking the, all the other days in the year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? All those in favor of approving the 2024, 2025 additional District Professional Development Day, um, say aye. Anyone opposed? The development day is approved. Do I have a motion to approve policies 603, 616, 618, and 620?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Gabler?
Board, this, these are the same policies, uh, that you saw at the September, that came up for discussion at the September meeting. There have been no changes to them, so I'm proposing that we vote to approve all four of them tonight.
Board members, do you have questions, comments on these policies? Hearing no comments, we will now vote. Um, all those in favor of approving policies 603, 616, 618, and 620, say aye. Anyone opposed? Policies 603, 616, 618, and 620 have been approved. Do any board members have any leadership or committee updates? Director Gabler?
Sorry. Uh, board members, I direct your eyes to the information section. There is a 2024, 2025 policy overview from the policy committee. I encourage you to take a look at that and just kind of, um, look at some of the policies that'll be coming to you over the course of the year. And if there are topics that you're like, hey, this is a question I have, and I want the policy committee to know about it now, that would be a great thing to do. So, that is, um, that is my committee update.
Thank you, Director Gabler. Director Arum?
Uh, LAC update. We postponed the Uh, LAC update. Uh, we postponed the legislative tours that were scheduled for October 7th. We'll be rescheduling them in November, um, due to scheduling conflicts with some of the legislators. But looking forward to it.
Uh, before I turn it over to Dr. Stanley, um, we still have four more minutes. So I have. I'm gonna take up two of those. No. Um, this was a long meeting, but it was a very important information-heavy meeting. And I want to thank Dr. Stanley and your team. It is a lot of work to do the work and at the high quality that was given to us tonight. So thank you to every department and every person that contributed to this. I really, really, really mean it. And thank you for staying late. Um, I know no one really wants to be at work till 11 o'clock at night. So I appreciate it. Um, and now I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Stanley.
Okay.
Since you're reading good things, we can maybe give you a little leeway.
I am reading good things. So this is from Elizabeth Grazer. She is a teacher at Normandale. She says Craig Johnson has been so kind to us over here at grade one at Normandale. I sent him an email to say thanks, but wanted to also see if anyone else can or at least know the high quality of service, uh, component and efficiency of the transportation department and field trips here in Edina book schools. Kudos to them. We had a field trip mixed up for our apple orchard and ended up having to find a last minute one. We had to request trips canceled, and Craig was so kind and worked with us to quickly get another one in the books. I am not sure how we can congratulate transportation, but if there was any way to do so, know that Normandale thinks he does a fabulous job. Yeah. And he absolutely does. Um, and then just got an email today from one of our parents, um, just really speaking so highly about, um, Katie Hamel and just the commitment to, um, really support her students, um, reading, and, um, about Nathan Monseth and Kathleen Mulrooney, um, just about hosting a, a CP, coffee and donuts at the park. And, um, just really appreciative of that and how that just brings all of the kids together. And that's just, just one little sample of, um, just all the things that our teachers are doing to make a difference for our students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. Um, with, unless there's something else. Do I, oh, uh-oh.
Sorry, I forgot to say this. I wanted to draw attention that our, uh, wigging, last week, there was a conference of journalists, journalist down at the University of Minnesota. And the staff of our high school yearbook, Wigring, um, won theme package, gold medallion all-state award in the first place in best at show. He said sweeping all three of these major awards for one book is essentially the same as earning a state championship in athletics. So, um, yes. And, uh, the Zephiris newspaper, which is also under Danny, Daniel Amborn's, um, advising, it, uh, they earned an all-state silver medallion for their print newspaper and a bronze medallion for their online coverage. And this conference was, uh, private and public schools, and Edina swept. So you should be very proud.
Um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to adjourn the meeting. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion has passed and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.